Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission. We're in our executive session. The first agenda item actually is that I'm sitting for our Chair Tommy Noonan, who's away. We do expect him to join by WebEx. We have a couple of commissioners with us by WebEx as well. But for the time being, we will need an alternate for Commissioner Noonan. Commissioner Leahy, you are next in line. So are you ready to sit for Commissioner Noonan? Could unmute yourself? Commissioner Leahy? Okay, just in the interest of time, Commissioner Kit?
Yes, I'm here, I can sit.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Kit, you are on.
Okay.
And the first item on the agenda is the minutes of July 12, 2022. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Francis. Any second?
Second.
Commissioner Harrison, second. Commissioner Francis, anything on the minutes?
No, lawyers.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison?
They look good to me. Thank you.
I also had a chance to review them, and they seemed perfectly in order. So could we have a vote on the minutes? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see all hands and ayes. The minutes are approved unanimously. Next order of business is the request of 230 Oldfield Road LLC for 100% release of a $53,094 bond pertaining to site improvements. Mr. Wen?
Mr. Chairman, this subject site is on the north side of Oldfield Road, just westerly of Reef Road. This commission approved a coastal site plan for an eight-unit townhouse development in November of 2019. The bonded improvements included drainage, curbing, sidewalk, and driveway apron. And you do have a report from the engineering department that they've inspected the improvements and recommend 100% release of the bond.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wen. I did note that recommendation from engineering. Do I have a motion on the release of the bond? The item is for 100% release of the bond. Commissioner Levy?
I move that the bond be released.
Very good. And seconded by Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Levy, any discussion?
Yep.
Commissioner Francis?
No.
Very good. So we're ready to vote then. All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I see all hands and ayes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That item also passes unanimously then. Moving on, I see applications for recommendation to public hearing. And this is the application of 1485 Stilson Road. Mr. Wen?
This is a re-subdivision application for two lots by statute does require public hearing, so it's just appearing tonight for recommendation to, for us to schedule it for subsequent hearing for public hearing.
Very good. And just as a point of order, we do have public hearings as a matter of course on re-subdivision application?
Yes, it is required.
Very good. So do I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Francis?
Move to approve.
Moved to public hearing?
Will move to public hearing.
Very good. Second, Commissioner Harrison. Okay. This item requires a public hearing. Any discussion?
Is this the corner of Stilson and Mill Plain?
It is not. There's a larger property on the corner of Stilson and Mill Plain, which is the old Ross estate. This is a little bit further up the street, kind of right at the bend of the road on the same side of the street.
Any further discussion on this item? Public hearing is required. Okay. So shall we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
My vote was a aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kit. Move to public hearing unanimously. Moving on to old business now, we have the matter 116 Sherman Street. Special permit application of MTM Sherman Street LLC pertaining to a new three-story mixed-use building in the Center Design District. And do we have, I guess, everyone who is now participating has attended the public hearing and is ready to vote? Very good. So do I have a motion on this special permit application?
I move to approve.
Okay. Any second, Commissioner Francis?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Wen, I should let you present.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this site is on the northerly side of Sherman Street and presently has a two-story building used as an office, which is comprised of 2,100 square feet. The proposal entails demolishing that existing building and constructing a new three-story mixed-use building. A total of 4,000 square feet of office is proposed, as well as two residential apartments. The ground floor is proposed at just under 1,000 square feet, and the upper floors are approximately 3,000 square feet each. The office use is divided between the ground floor and the third floor, and the two apartments will be located on the second floor. There is a rooftop deck space proposed as an amenity for both the office and one of the apartments. In the second, the other apartment has a second-floor exterior balcony. A total of 13 parking spaces are proposed. The zoning board of appeals granted a variance earlier this year to reduce the required parking from 18 spaces. New concrete sidewalk, curbing, and driveway apron is proposed along the street frontage. And the considerations for a special permit are found in Section 25.7.7. Is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such characters to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and avoid undue traffic congestion? And that is all I have subject to questions, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Wen, do we have to, in connection with this application, specifically invoke our discretion under 28.6.1 with respect to the parking spaces to reduce the parking requirement?
That's an excellent question. As it turns out, the applicant assumed, I'd assume is not the right word, included in their request to the ZBA that two spaces, the office space would require 16 parking spaces, and the office space would require, I'm sorry, the residential apartments would require two, a piece, for a total of 20, with that 50% reduction was 18. So they've, the variance presumes that the commission would consider that. So I think it's fair game to consider. The idea there being that the occupancies won't occur simultaneously, so that it's fair to consider reducing the parking from four spaces to two for the apartments in that their peak occupancy won't coincide with the peak occupancy of the office. So the variance does presume that, so yes, you would have to make a finding that that's appropriate.
At the same time, the variance does give them the ability to do this project with 13 parking spaces.
Correct.
Very good. So Commissioner Levy, it was your motion. So any comments?
Yeah, I'd move to approve. I think it meets all the considerations for the special permit. I mean, the building itself, I find to be attractive. It is consistent with the neighborhood. We're right there, there are a number of, you know, where once probably residential areas, which are now being used as offices. There's commercial development on one side, there's condominiums on the other. So it provides a good transition within the neighborhood. I think it will actually increase property values there as far as the neighborhood. And in terms of traffic congestion, my understanding is that the Mead Law Firm is likely to be one of the tenants. But regardless, in this post-COVID, not post-COVID, but this era, we're seeing fewer and fewer clients coming to offices, the need for parking is considerably less. I don't see any problem with any traffic congestion in this particular site. You know, Sherman Street is more than adequate to handle that, plus there is the, you know, they're not far from the Reef Road there. So I think under all the circumstances, they meet the considerations for a special permit and exercise our discretion as far as the reduction in parking. And let's face it, if we can bring divorce lawyers from Bridgeport to Fairfield, so much the better.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Francis?
Yes, I would add, I think it's an excellent use of the property also, and the simulated wood siding will be very attractive on Sherman Street. Mr. Wen, is the building in the backyard being demolished also?
To the extent that there might be a garage back there, yes. Everything on the site presently?
It looks like it was a garage, but now it's got all glass and padlocks and key entries. It's being demolished.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other commissioners, either live or by WebEx. Commissioner Ford?
Just briefly, I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners. And I'm familiar with the Meads as attorneys. I think it's a home run for Fairfield and a big loss for Bridgeport. So we're good to have these great trial lawyers in town, and I think they're going to do great there. And it's a good use of the space, attractive building, and it fits in. So I would approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Other commissioners? Commissioner Braun?
I think it's a good addition, too. I support it fully.
Very good. Well, I concur with all of the comments. I do think it meets all of the special permit criteria. And I think it's attractively designed, I think it's a good use of the space, in a good location. The, you know, the separation of the apartments by the office space was a bit unique, but I think that was well addressed by the applicant's team and the design team in terms of how that would work practically. And I think it's going to be an attractive pair of apartments and a very good office space use for that site. And excellent for the neighborhood and for the community. So I am in favor of it as well. Any other comments? Okay, then I think we're ready to move this to vote. I'm also in favor of reducing the parking requirement to the extent that that's necessary under 20.6.1. So the motion on the table is to approve the special permit application. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The application is approved unanimously. Moving on, the next item of old business, 1073 North Benson Road, special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to the construction of a new student dormitory in the A Zone. And again, all those who are participating tonight are ready to deliberate on this. Mr. Wen?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Fairfield University is proposing to construct a four-story, 165-bed dormitory in the residential quadrangle area of campus. University originally applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-story building, but later reduced that to four after discussion with neighbors. There were several conditions in the approval that were recommended by the university after extensive neighbor outreach, and they include the proposed eight-foot berm with 16-foot-high arborvitae is to be installed along Round Hill Road. That proposed berm is 350 feet in length and is intended to provide screening of the existing parking lot and replace the existing trees and vegetation that do not provide screening during the times of year when there is no leaf canopy. New street trees are also proposed on the street side of that berm every 50 feet between the existing sidewalk and the proposed berm. As presented, there will be new pole lighting that will be 12 feet in height and replace the existing poles that are 16 to 18 feet in height. And additionally, there was another requirement that the lights within the building be replaced on the inside face of the wall to reduce visible fixtures from the exterior of the building. The relevant standard conditions for special exception are as follows. Number one is the location type, character, and size of the use in buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate orderly development of the town and neighborhood. Two is the nature and location of the use of buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic. And four is the proposed use and compliance with the conservation and development. Subject to any questions, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wen. Do I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Leahy?
I'd move to approve.
Very good. Do I have a second? Commissioner Francis? You guys are quick on the trigger today. You should have been playing Jeopardy tonight. So Commissioner Levy, it is your motion. What are your comments?
Very simply, I mean, the location type and character, is it consistent with the neighborhood? Well, sure, dormitory in the university, certainly consistent there. Adequate fire protection, apparently that's been built into the plan from what I could see in the site plan. In terms of traffic, I think that was adequately addressed by the applicant, the fact that it will be freshmen and sophomores, there should be no significant impact on the local traffic. And to the extent that perchance residents from the beach might move back into their dorms, it'll reduce traffic back and forth in the school. Is it consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Very much so for the university area. In terms of the outreach, in terms of reducing the height of the building and providing for a berm and the arborvitae, I think in fact, from what I saw in the evidence, it'll provide more privacy to the neighborhood than the existing trees that are there. And even though I hate to see, you know, full-grown trees cut down, I think this plan will provide for better screening and privacy for the neighborhood. And in terms of the, you know, the plan, as far as planting the 50 feet that's in there, I would like to make a recommendation, non-binding, that they consider adequate plantings along the berm to make it attractive, not as a condition, but as a recommendation and request from this commission.
Okay, so as part of your motion to approve, Commissioner Levy, that recommendation be included in the approval, the decision?
Yes, but as a recommendation, but not a condition.
Very good. And Commissioner Francis, before your comments, I should ask you, are you in agreement with that modification to the motion?
Sure. I think they're planning to have arborvitae across the whole berm anyway.
I couldn't hear that.
They're planning to have arborvitae across the top of the whole berm to handle the five months of the year that deciduous trees down at the street level won't be providing screening.
But you're, okay, we're seconding the motion with the recommendation of replanting deciduous trees as well? And what are your thoughts on that motion?
I think it will be an excellent addition for the university and the community. It seems well thought out with the neighbors, and I commend the university for its excellent Well-designed.
I'm sorry.
It's well-designed and fits right into that spot on campus. I think it will be useful.
Thank you very much. Other commissioners, either live or by WebEx. Commissioner Braun?
I do not like the landscaping plan, and I would like to have a condition that the exact trees that are there now, if it is approved, be replaced, which I find kind of hard to be able to be done. There's too many trees being cut down. I wish we could have one more hearing where we could discuss just if it's able to be done to keep the trees that are there now. They're mature trees, they're not barren from what I could see from some of the photos. I hate to cut that many trees down. I mean, the pictures that we have here are quite lush-looking.
Did you drive by? A lot of them are very small.
Pardon me?
A lot of them are small and close together. Whereas replacing them with substantial?
I mean...
Well, it's just, I have one person talking, one, Commissioner Braun?
The landscaping plan does show, the arborvitae is, I know it's a screen, and it's very Disney-esque, it does show that they are planting deciduous trees in front of that. But is there a way of putting in a condition that they have to have as many, or, you know, to make it basically filter the arborvitae? You know, have a buffer between the street and the arborvitae? That's what I'm thinking. The arborvitae are simply so you don't see the building, but they don't look good and, you know. I just would like to have more control over the plantings that are done in front of the arborvitae, between the arborvitae and the road.
Are you talking about trees, deciduous trees being planted or replanted between the arborvitae and the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Where they are now, I think. I think he said you couldn't build the berm without cutting all the trees down, that you couldn't do what they want to do. And I appreciate, the building is good, I think it's not a bad project. I just would like to add a condition that they have sufficient deciduous trees or deciduous trees planted between the arborvitae and the sidewalk. What's the best way of proposing that?
So do you want to propose an amendment to Commissioner Levy's motion? And see if Wen accepts that amendment?
And perhaps it would be, would it be something the tree warden would do, or somebody with more expertise than me about trees?
Well, I'll ask Mr. Wen to comment. My understanding is that the tree warden only has jurisdiction over trees in the right-of-way, in the public right-of-way, not on private property, but I'll let Mr. Wen comment on that.
And that berm is private property, I think.
Correct. That's my understanding. So, Mr. Wen, anything on the role of the tree warden in planting or replanting deciduous trees here?
Yeah, a couple things. Just give me one second. I made a, I have to blow up this one, but there is...
I thought I had got a landscaping plan, but I don't think I did. I looked it up. I made a separate one, a different one.
Yeah, there is. We do have a landscaping plan.
On the original?
There is. And I will say that it is correct that it's not physically possible to construct the berm without eliminating, and there's no doubt that they are eliminating some existing trees. And at this time of year, you know, there's some pretty good cover there, but as the university's photos show in the non-leaf season, you can see right through that. That said, the nine deciduous trees that are proposed between the sidewalk and the street are pretty close to, if not within, the town right-of-way. And that was done in conjunction with the tree warden's recommendation for species. There's three different types of trees in there, and every 50 feet is the standard. What I would suggest is if there's an opportunity to increase that number, that perhaps in line with what Mr. Commissioner Levy recommended is perhaps, maybe not as a condition, but we seek the advice of the tree warden to increase that number of deciduous trees to the extent that he deems appropriate.
Does that address your concern?
Yeah, that does.
Okay. And Commissioner Levy, is that consistent with your motion?
Yes.
Very good. Other commissioners? Either live or by WebEx. Anyone else? I am also in agreement with this application. I do think it meets all the special permit, special exception criteria. I did note that the university engaged in, as was phrased, extensive outreach, and of course, you know, this commission, like all land use commissions, greatly appreciates that. And we greatly appreciate the efforts, not only of the university, but of the neighbors to compromise. No compromise is perfect by nature. The university gave up something, the neighbors gave up something. And again, no compromise is going to achieve complete consensus. There were neighbors that did not participate or were not in agreement with a compromise that was reached in the application before the ZBA. They raised concerns before this commission, as they had every right to do, and I looked at those very carefully. I think a number of commissioners, including myself, asked the university a number of questions that were designed to probe those concerns. And I believe the university adequately, or in some cases, more than adequately addressed those concerns. So while this is an application that does not come to us with unanimous consensus of the neighborhood, it comes to us with a substantial consensus from the neighborhood. And I do believe that it has a lot to recommend it, and that it will be improvement not only for the university, but for the neighborhood and the community. There's a lot about the, there's a lot about the border between the university and Round Hill Road that will be even better after this application is approved than it was before, as was noted in the application and the hearing. So I am in favor of it, and I do appreciate the recommendation that was appended to the motion to approve the item. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Braun?
How do I put my proposal in, is my amendment on there now?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is that your understanding?
The recommendation is that the university will work with the tree warden and basically use its best efforts to reach an appropriate planting plan, presumably with more deciduous trees, but that being a recommendation by this board, which we hope they would take very seriously.
Very good. And Mr. Wen, does that give you enough clarity to put it in the decision?
It does.
If approved.
Is that strong enough to make it happen, or is that just a recommendation? Like, can we make that a condition?
It is a recommendation. It's phrased as a recommendation and not as a condition, but it's, you know, it's a strongly worded recommendation.
Well, what I would say is that whatever recommendation that comes from the tree warden would be implemented. If the tree warden says, we've looked at this carefully, and given the size of the trees, we think nine is the right number, then the university wouldn't have to add any trees. But after further review, they come in and say, you know what, we can intersperse some, perhaps some smaller species in between and add to that number, and that is approved by the tree warden, then that would be the plan that would be implemented.
Can we make that a condition with the flexibility of what the tree warden recommends?
We can. Do you want to, do you want to, do you want to propose that as an amendment?
I would like to make a condition of approval that the trees, the deciduous trees that would be planted, deciduous or coniferous, whatever the tree warden recommends to satisfactorily replace what's there now, be done to the maximum amount the tree warden recommends. That would be my condition. So if the tree warden says nine, that's it. If the tree warden says 12, then that would be what they would have to do. And maintain them, obviously, afterwards.
Commissioner Levy, do you consent to the amendment that the tree warden's recommendation, abiding by the tree warden's recommendation, be a condition of approval?
I only question whether we can condition our approval on the discretion of an official. That's why I made it a recommendation as opposed to a condition.
Yeah, I understand that concern. It doesn't take an official vote of another body. I think it's, we can work that out administratively. So I, in some cases, I agree with you, that may be a concern, but in this case, I think that saying that the requirement is tied to whatever the recommendation ends up being by the tree warden, I think is flexible enough.
So why don't we make it a condition that the applicant would implement the recommendations of the tree warden with respect to the planting of deciduous and other trees and plantings along the berm?
Very good.
I like other trees and plantings, because it could be shrubs as well. Thank you. That's well worth it.
Trees and plantings, very good. Commissioner Braun is in agreement. Commissioner Francis, do you second the motion? Very good. So any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Okay. The motion on the table is to approve the special exception application with the condition as stated by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Hearing no opposition, no abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously, and the application is approved. Next item on the agenda is compliances. And we have the compliance application of 1485 Black Rock Turnpike. Zoning compliance application of Hambell LLC to establish an office use in a former food service establishment in the Neighborhood Design District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this site is located on the westerly side of Black Rock Turnpike and has been the home of a deli since the building was constructed in 1984. Some of you may remember the original Bodgie's Deli that was there. It's had... It's had several names. There's a basement level retail use, the Turnpike Music Garage, uh, that's, uh, that occupies the basement, that primarily provides, uh, music lessons and other music, um, instruments. The deli has been vacant for several months. The applicant, uh, is the prospective purchaser of this property and proposes to renovate the first floor for the conversion from the deli use to an office use for an employment agency. They are presently located a couple of doors down at fifteen fifteen, uh, Black Rock Turnpike. The deli had four hundred square feet of patron area, which requires ten parking spaces. The eighteen hundred square feet of office would require eight parking spaces. Uh, so there's not an increase in demand for parking here. And there are presently thirteen spaces on the site. That is all I have, subject to questions, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Um, do I have a motion on this item? Do I have a motion? Any motion? Commissioner Braun, thank you. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Harrison? All right, uh, very good. Uh, Commissioner Braun?
I'm trying to figure out where this is. Can you tell me where this is in relation to other businesses and like?
Sure. Um, if you are traveling northbound on Black Rock Turnpike, it's south of the Tuxus Hill Road intersection. If you know where the old Coons Corner, uh, I'm dating myself again. Um, the shopping center where Stefano's Restaurant, uh, in Chips. It's directly across the street from Stefano's. It is the first commercial, as you're traveling north on Black Rock, there's a cemetery on the right, there's a condominium on the left. And then the first commercial property is this.
On the left.
On the left, as you're northbound.
So. The, the deli was on the first floor, music was on the basement, and now they want to?
Correct. They're converting the deli to a, uh, an office use. It's all in, essentially interior alteration, a change of use from food service to, um, employment or, or.
Okay.
An office.
Yeah, and the mu-, the music shop use is unchanged, as I understand.
What's, I'm sorry?
Music shop use is unchanged.
Correct.
I don't remember that deli. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Oh, and, um, any commentary on the motion?
That's, that's all my thoughts.
Oh, okay.
It sounds like it's, I don't see any problem with it. It's adequate. Converting from deli to office?
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
I have nothing to add. I think this is, this is fine. And, um, I don't think it'll add any stress to that neighborhood or to that area.
Very good. Uh, other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Francis?
Does, does a person live up in the house behind the deli?
No, no one lives there.
I don't, I don't think there is another structure on that.
It was, it was extremely deep when we did the site visit.
Who, who was that that just spoke for the record?
This is, this is, uh, this is Judith Hamilton. I'm one of the owners.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Uh, any other questions or comments from any commissioners? Okay, I, I reviewed this and, uh, I think it's in compliance with the regulations. And I think it's, uh, a good use for that space, which had been vacant. And, uh, I, I'm in favor of it. Um, so can we, uh, vote on this item? If, if you would, um, raise your hand or say aye. The motion is to approve their compliance. Uh, all in favor? Okay. Um, I see, uh, all hands. And, um, it does, uh, pass unanimously. Uh, no abstentions and no, uh, opposition. Uh, the next agenda item is, uh, fourteen ten, uh, dash fourteen twenty-four Post Road. Zoning compliance application of Fairfield Community Theater LLC for interior alterations to convert existing office space to a single residential apartment in the Center Design District. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, the applicant is proposing interior alterations to convert nine hundred and seventy square feet of existing second floor office to a single one-bedroom apartment. Uh, exterior access will be via an existing door at street level. The only proposed exterior alteration is a metal balcony, uh, approximately five feet in width that will run the full depth of the apartment. And that balcony will overhang approximately one-half of the width of the existing alley between this subject parcel, uh, and the adjacent commercial building. The parking demand for nine hundred and seventy square feet of office is four spaces, while a single apartment would require two spaces. Therefore, this proposed use reduces the parking demand for the building and is otherwise compliant. There were some images, uh, there was a, um, an architectural rendering as part of your packet, as well as a photo. And if you're looking at that, or I have it here if you need, it's the, essentially, if you're looking at the building from the Post Road, it would be the second floor. The first four windows from the left would be the, this, this space.
Very good. Very good. Do I have a motion on this item? Uh, Commissioner Braun? Uh, you move.
Yeah, I'll move.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Harrison, thank you.
So.
Yeah.
This is in the Community Theater Building, but on the Post Road side.
Correct.
Yes.
It's the red brick building, not the white one, um.
Correct. If you're looking, I, I, I don't know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at the photograph.
Okay, the photograph that was submitted, the, 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 the white commercial building is not the subject parcel. The brick building, which is part of the Community Theater Building, it's the second floor, the first four windows from the left-hand side of the building. You can see the alleyway between the white building.
The alleyway.
Right. Right.
What used to be there, is that, was that in the?
It was office space. They had leaseable, they had leased office space upstairs.
The bar is to the right of that or the public?
The, the upstairs of the restaurant was, yes, is to the, to the right.
So, since it does not require any extra parking, that's exactly what we're looking for downtown. Mixed use, retail below, residential above, sounds, sounds good to me.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
Nothing, nothing to add.
Okay. Um, uh, any other commissioners?
I, uh, I reviewed the plans and obviously this is in compliance with our regulation. The demand for apartments is, uh, higher in, in many cases. And certainly in this case, apparently for, than the demand for office space. Um, I did think that it was, uh, going to be attractively, uh, safely designed. Um, the exterior, you know, elevations and, and rendering looked attractive, um, you know, in keeping with the Post Road, um, and consistent with the, uh, the Community Theater. And, uh, I, I think it's a, a good use of that space. So I'm in favor of this as well.
Are we ready to vote? Okay. Um, the mo-, the motion is to improve the compliance. Uh, could you, uh, raise your hand or say aye if you're in agreement? Okay. I see, uh, all hands in favor and no o-, opposition or abstention. So that passes unanimously as well. Now we move to our public hearing. Uh, and this is a continuation of the public hearing on, uh, two items. The first is, uh, zoning regulation amendment, uh, application of fifteen Uncle Road LLC to amend section twelve point three of the zoning regulation, uh, for the Center Design Business District, uh, with a proposed new section twelve point three point twenty-nine, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity for a force housing component. And the second companion application is, uh, fifteen Uncle Road, zoning compliance application of fifteen Uncle Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a sixty-three unit residential building pursuant to section eight dash thirty-G of the Connecticut General Statutes, uh, again in the Center Design Business District. Um, I will note for the record at the outset that we have received, um, an, a petition to intervene in this matter, um, under the Connecticut Environmental Protection Act. And that was by, uh, Mr. Leo Redgate. Uh, Mr. Went, any commentary on the procedure, uh, for the intervention before we proceed?
Um, I don't have any comment at this point. I did provide the commission some background on, um, twenty twenty nineteen interventions that will ultimately require a finding from this commission at, at, at the end of the hearing, as when you deliberate on this matter, whether or not, um, the matters raised in the petition, uh, and we'll hear more about that from the intervenor, um, create, uh, an unreasonable, uh, pollution of the air, environment, or other natural resources of the state pursuant to the statute. But that is the, I'll, I'll get into that, uh, when we recap the hearing and your considerations for deliberation. But I did provide you a memo with background information on interventions in general. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Very, very good, Mr. Went, thank you. I do recognize, uh, Mr. Ford, Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, just briefly, uh, the, uh, I have represented Mr. Redgate in the past as a client. Uh, I've known him a long time. So just in fairness to the applicant, I'm going to recuse myself from, uh, this application.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ford. And, uh, who do we have that can sit for Commissioner Ford?
Well, at this stage, Mr. Chairman, for the hearing, all of the members present, um, including all alternates, are, are, can actively participate during the hearing and answer and ask any questions. Uh, it's, we don't need to worry about who's sitting until we're in the deliberative portion of this application.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and so with that, uh, I'd just remind, uh, the applicant and the intervenor and the public that when we last broke, uh, for, uh, an adjournment of the public hearing, the applicant was, uh, in the middle of his presentation. And I believe that there were, uh, additional expert witnesses, uh, to present on behalf of the applicant. And, uh, after the applicant, uh, is done with their presentation, there'll be an opportunity for the intervenor, uh, to present his, uh, case. Uh, and then, uh, the, uh, the public will also have an opportunity to comment. Um, after, uh, the, uh, intervenor and the public have commented, then the applicant will have a chance to rebut. Um, and, uh, at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant, Attorney Smith, who's participating by webex, uh, would, would you like to proceed with your, um, case in chief, as it were?
Certainly. Uh, good evening, Mr. Acting Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Went, Ms. Harrigan. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Alton Pearson. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner applicant, fifteen Uncle Road LLC. At the outset, I'd like to indicate that, uh, Dr. Lee Forrest of the owner applicant is in attendance this evening. I believe that, uh, Dr. Forrest is, is in person. I apologize for having to, uh, participate remotely. And we do have a number of our consultants due to, uh, some issues with NuVarient that are not able to attend this evening either. And, um, so we apologize for that and mean no disrespect, obviously, to the commission. I will be there for the upcoming hearing dates. Uh, we did, um, also with, uh, with us this evening remotely, we have Jason Edwards and Larry Edwards of the J. Edwards Associates LLC, our surveyor and professional civil engineer, our architect, John Geds of Geds Associates, Inc., our traffic expert, who we'll be hearing from momentarily, our traffic engineer, Neil Olinsky of SLR, and then Joseph Verstig of Verstig Associates LLC, our co-compliance and life safety specialist. Um, as the commission is aware, we, this is the third night of public hearing. We did appear before you on, uh, June fourteenth and then again on June twenty-eighth, uh, going, providing you with a presentation of the proposal. Uh, for the record, I do understand that we do have a combined, combined hearing, as, uh, Mr. Chairman, you indicated, relative to the two applications. And, uh, we hope to complete our presentation. Uh, Mr. Olinsky, our traffic engineer, uh, was just addressing the last component of his traffic study involving parking, uh, after which we'll hear from Mr. Verstig concerning fire and emergency safety issues. And ultimately, uh, then we'll, as the chair indicated, we'll hear from the twenty twenty nineteen intervener and the public. And we hope after we've heard from everyone, uh, at that point, that we will, uh, be able to generate a concerted rebuttal, uh, for the commission and present that at one of your upcoming meetings. And, uh, with the permission of the chair, Mr. Chairman, Acting Chairman, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Olinsky of SLR, again, who will complete his review and summary of his traffic report that is part of the record and was submitted prior to the first evening of public hearing. And I see that Neil is there. Mr. Olinsky, now, subject to the chair's, uh, permission.
Very, very good, Attorney Smith. Uh, Mr. Olinsky?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Neil Olinsky with SLR Consulting. Um, Ms. Harrigan, I'm not sure if you're able to pull up the slide deck, if it's not already up. If not, no big deal. Um, but to really, yeah, I'm going to jump into the topic of parking, which is what we left off with.
It should be right towards the end. Uh, Chris Smith, for the record, I think it's maybe, uh, at the line, Ms. Harrigan, maybe the third to last or fourth to last slide, parking assessment. Is that correct? Neil?
That's correct. Go to forty-five, slide forty-five.
That it?
Has it come up yet? My big. Yep, looks good. Looks good. Alrighty. So starting, picking up where, where I left off at the end of the last hearing, um, parking assessment, that parking is the topic we were getting right into or just about to.
I'm wanting to help understand that, I'm sorry. I just can't see it very well. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. As you all know, this project is proposing sixty-three dwelling units and sixty onsite parking spaces to go along with that, which is just under one space per unit. I think one of the, one thing I'd like to point out from the get-go is it's my understanding that three, three other eight thirty-two approvals in the last several years have been approved with, um, just at or just around one space per unit. So this is, this is consistent with that. When we look at statistical data, that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is widely considered to be the industry standard data used by the, uh, the state DOT and just about every town in the state, ITE. What we find is for a development of this type with this many units, we estimate, we really estimated a range on the second bullet point, that it may generate a peak parking demand of fifty to seventy-five parked vehicles for residential developments. As people intuitively know, residential parking peaks overnight. It peaks overnight when people are sleeping and obviously they're less likely to be driving around. During the daytime, parking demands are even less. So based on that, there's a possi-, very good possibility, this, the sixty onsite parking spaces are going to be able to accommodate the, the, the total peak parking demand is this development. The high end of the range, there might be fif-, upwards of fifteen parked vehicles at night that may have to park elsewhere. Um, the site's, the location, as everybody knows, is in downtown. It's in downtown. It's also near the train station. I'd classify it as many would as a transit-oriented development, simply based on its location. That, along with other factors, can, can encourage car shedding. So, um, households that may have one car or no cars, for example, it may seek out this type of development because of its location, the ability to use other travel options. Um, there's the ability to put in, put in shared parked vehicles, uh, so-called zip cars on the site, which could help, help to reduce parking demands. And the project's proposing to put in bicycle parking, which can also reduce parking demands. So at the, at the end of the day, we, we expect that the, the project is, it's really going to be, the sixty spaces are going to be sufficient. And not every unit's going to have a develop, um, not every household unit in this project may have a car, some may have two. At the end of the day, very hard to predict, it may even out. And at the high end of the range, there could be some, um, some, someone upwards of fifteen parked vehicles at night that, that might seek to park elsewhere if, uh, if the high-end estimates come, come to bear. That said, there's ample amount of off-site public parking in the immediate surrounding area that could easily accommodate those over. in the immediate surrounding area that could easily accommodate those overnight parking demands. As you can see on the, the aerial image here, just within a short two to three-minute walk of the site, there's upwards of 200 public parking spaces. We did counts of the public parking between Route 1 and the railroad tracks and found at night on a Friday and a Saturday, there's dozens of empty parking spaces, which just goes back to the point that it's public, plenty of public parking. And if you include the, the large Metro North lot to the north of the railroad tracks, there's hundreds of empty parking spaces at night. So at the end of the day, we think this, this project and the amount of parking that they're proposing is going to be sufficient. Emmeline, you can go on to the next slide. Yes. And so really, to summarize and conclude, at the end of the day, as we went into at length, the traffic issues, we don't think there are going to be tra, any traffic issues for this development. We looked at the traffic operations at the site driveways on Sanford Street, and they're expected to operate really good at level serves A. When we look at the project and compare the trip, trip numbers, trip rates versus the current or prior uses, commercial uses of the site, it very well be a net reduction in traffic associated with this site compared to the, the prior uses versus the currently proposed residential. As I just mentioned, parking, we expect to be adequate. The fourth bullet point, we didn't really get into, but we included it in our report. We made mention in our report that the town should really consider reaching out to ConDOT if they haven't already, to look into some relatively minor upgrades to the pedestrian ramps at the corners of Sanford Street, Route 1, which we noticed are not, not technically ADA compliant on the north side. I wouldn't say this is an absolute necessary thing for this project because there are pedestrian ramps at the corners there now. But they could be made ADA compliant. Quite frankly, if the town reaches out to ConDOT, it's quite possible that it could be included in a state capital improvement program for, for the upcoming years. Being that, that it's really a state intersection, working with ConDOT, that would be, would be needed. And coming back to the site itself, at the vehicle driveway exits to Sanford Street, where there are sidewalks today, to, to address that and like any good development, we're putting it, going to put in stop signs at the exits. And there will be, there'll be wall openings right there where the, the building is going to be near the sidewalk. Wall openings, we checked, are going to be essentially from the ground to just about the ceiling. So motorists exiting the site and pedestrians walking by will be more able to see themselves, each other, at those spots at the site driveways that would be coming right out to Sanford Street. So that pretty much, pretty much ends it for, for traffic, traffic and parking presentation. And I think I addressed all the topics, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olin. Thank you, Mr. Olin. I see some questions from the Commission. Commissioner Braun and then Commissioner Harrison.
I have actually two concerns. They, we kind of floated, I don't know who I'm talking to, but we kind of floated them up at the last meeting, which was quite a while ago. So I'm just going to repeat them now because I don't think I was fully satisfied with whatever the answer was back then. So one of them was trips leaving the building, and the other one was overflow parking. So trips leaving the building, in your, in your analysis, you show, you show that it's improving, that by building this building, which has, I believe, 106 bedrooms plus dens and some of the others, so maybe more than 106 people could live there, I suppose, you're anticipating that there'll be less trips leaving the site than there are now. And the, the current situation includes a coffee shop. But again, as I pointed out last time, the coffee shop is on Uncle Row where there's no exit or egress, ingress or egress from this property. The proposed project is all on Sanford Street coming in and out. So I don't think there's a lot of cars entering the site now that would be going to the coffee shop, but yet the coffee shop was used in your site-generated traffic, which is obviously from one of the ITE studies, but I don't think it's customized for this location. So I, I don't see how adding a building that has 106 bedrooms plus dens on top of that could generate less trips than what's there right now, especially because on Sanford Street, you don't have a lot of the, you don't have the sort of retail business. You have like an office, I think, and a painting storage place. So that's one question I have. And the se, and that sort of impinges on the second one, which is overflow parking. It's, it's hard to believe that 106 bedrooms plus dens on top of that. And I didn't get an answer on how many dens there were. I asked the architect last time. Maybe he can answer that this time. I, I think your report said there would only be 15 overflow cars that would need to be parked on the road. It's just hard to believe with 60 spaces for 106 bedrooms plus dens, you would only have 15. And then those people are going to be out on the road, which also affects sightline. So those are my questions.
All right. So to clarify, I'm thinking your first question. The, we did, we looked at ITE statistical data, which is widely used by just about every town and the Connecticut DOT. And we did, we did a comparison between the current or prior uses of the site, what the trip stats, trip rates might estimate versus the currently proposed residential. We didn't specifically look or assume, we did not specifically assume that the, the, the coffee shop traffic goes in and out of the site. We simply did that, a comparison of the current proposed development versus the prior proposed development, how much total traffic it might generate to the downtown as a whole, if that makes sense. When we did our level of service analysis, we only looked at the, the 63 residential units and their traffic that would be estimated to enter and exit the site in the future. And we still found it to be a level service A at the site driveways. And again, with the, going into question, your question two, the parking estimates were again looked at based on stats, which are widely considered to be the industry standard statistics. You know, given the site's location as a TOD, it's going to have less parking than a, you know, if you plot this development in a more peripheral suburban area where there's no other options to drive. So it's good, we expect it to be lower parking demands. And we don't expect any overflow that could occur and may not occur. But if it does occur, upwards of, say, 15 parked vehicles based on this statistic, we don't expect them to all need to park on the street and the on-street parking. There's public off-street lot parking as well in several lots, including the main, the major Metro North lot, which is virtually empty overnight when this residential development would have its busiest parking needs. But I hope that answers your questions, ma'am.
Getting back to sightline, I'm assuming that people that live there will want to park as close as possible to the building, which would be right up along that road, you know, between the two, the two driveways and on either side of the two driveways. And we talked about this last time, and I appreciate that Attorney Smith sent us the, the DOT guidelines about sightline with respect to parked vehicles. And I know the guy, I looked it up actually last time at the hearing. I do know that the guideline says you don't have to consider vehicles parked because they're considered transient. But what if it's not transient? What if it's pretty much there all the time because of the overflow parking? Can you consider that? Is it illegal to consider it? I assume you could consider it if it's the actual anticipation of what will happen.
No, I don't think you could consider it. I mean, there's not only the fact that the, the Connecticut DOT's roadway standards state what they stay in terms of not considering on-street parking to be a permanent obstruction, a permanent obstruction or anything. You, you have on, basically, you have on Sanford Street right there, you have time limits. And quite frankly, if enforcement is happening during the daytime, nobody should be parking there for more than two hours anyways. And if they're staying longer, they're subject to ticketing and I would presume towing. Overnight parking, you could park overnight. But the daytime restrictions between, I think, like 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, we're only two-hour parking. So I don't, I don't think anybody's going to, you know, be parking there permanently, which is not allowed based on your current signage and parking limits.
I guess it's a legal interpretation whether the guidelines of the DOT are a floor that we must satisfy or a feeling that we don't have to go beyond in terms of planning for safety in the future.
Well, again, I don't want to dive too much into the sightlines because we, we talked about that at length. But there's the intersection sight distances for motorists exiting the site, which are, yeah, they're criteria, they're, they're standards. But there's also stopping sight distances for motorists approaching the site. And I would say the stopping sight distances are really the floor, which we meet in this project, site driveways meet, they meet those readily. On-street parking does not come into play with regard to stopping sight distances because you're looking along the travel path of the roadway where, where you can, quite easily, given how.
Sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Braun, just to finish your follow-up and then Commissioner Harrison, and then I know Commissioner Kent had her hand up.
I just wanted to point out, we, we got a lot of emails in the last like 24 hours. So I just saw one of them from a local resident attorney for, I think, his office is right around the corner there. But he provided a lot of photos which show, and, and other photos I've seen. Plus, you know, we know, we're familiar with the area. There are cars pretty much always there. And they, they never leave. I, I almost would think that that's a permanent thing, whether the same car is staying or not, they're always filled with cars. Would that change your opinion?
No, no. Again, it does, it comes back to the DOT's, their standards, the Highway Design Manual, roadway design standards, that do not consider on-street parking to be a permanent obstruction.
Okay. Well, that's, I have a different legal interpretation, but, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Olinsky, the last hearing, I did ask you, New City, we're going to get this for me, what years the data was, was being collected with this ITE guide? I think it's 11th edition that you're using.
Correct.
Were you able to retrieve that?
I did look at that quickly. I don't have all the exact numbers and dates in front of me. But just at a quick glance, and we can follow this up more in our rebuttal, the statistics go back to the 90s, but also include data as, as recent as the 2020s, this decade, in, in several states, including Connecticut and other states in the Northeast.
And then again, can you just explain maybe to me, I'm a kind of a novice at this, I'm not a planner, not an engineer, how this data is relevant to Fairfield? Because as I understand it, it's collected from other parts of the country. I just want to understand why it's relevant to Fairfield.
Well, it's used across the board. It's considered an industry standard. And it's widely accepted in, for developments of all types in all towns. The ITE stats have been getting better and better and more, more tailored to different types of developments. But it is what we rely on and what the state ConDOT accepts. And it's just the most readily available data that we use.
Okay, thank you. And I had a question about, I can.
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry, I missed actually. Now, the staff in their report, they issued, they had some issues around the sightline, which you probably read. The engine, I can read it to you if that's helpful. Let me know if I should do that. The engineering department has raised concerns that driver sightlines due to driveway ramp slope and potential blockage of view. They requested more detail on the methodology of the sightline analysis. And it goes on. Do you feel like we have adequate sightlines here?
Yes.
Do you think this is safe?
I, I do, because the ramp slopes don't come into play. When you consider the fact that sightlines are measured starting from the travelway of the roadway, which is approximately eight foot, eight feet south of the curb line. And you, you start at that point and go back 10, 15 feet. At both of those points, the, the measurement of the intersection sight distance is on the sidewalk. So you're not, it's not going to be further back into the site where it's obstructed by the building or on the, on an incline from a ramp or anything like that. It's going to be, you're, the motor is set that's 15 feet back from the travelway, is at the sidewalk, above the sidewalk at that point. And the ramp slopes do not, don't even come into play.
Okay. No, thank you. I'm just concerned there's, you know, as I mentioned before, there are three schools in a very close proximity to this area, pedestrians. We have a scooter program now, so I, I am really concerned about pedestrian safety. And thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kent. Commissioner Kent.
Okay, here, I'm sorry, I turned my video off. I was just served dinner. My concern is with your parking estimates because I really don't think relying on off-site parking is really feasible. It is, I believe it's unrealistic to expect that people in Fairfield don't own at least one car considering our location. And my question really is, how are you going to monitor and enforce how many cars residents have? If you've got a two-bedroom apartment and both people have cars, does only one person get a parking, one car get a parking spot? And that means another car has to park off-site, or what if they're two? I'm just wondering how you're going to enforce that. You're assuming people aren't going to have cars, but I believe they will. We do have a lot of people who commute to Hartford or New Haven, which isn't, well, New Haven's convenient by public transit, transit, but Hartford's not. So how are you going to manage that number? Are you going to deed restrict certain units saying, you know, you may not have a car if you have one of these units?
What, what often happens in developments or downtown locations in Stanford and New Haven and elsewhere is the, it's, it's really, what often happens is one, you get, each, each unit or, yeah, each residential unit in the building gets one, one parking space. And if, if a, if a particular family in one of the units has two cars, they have to figure out what to do about the second car. That could very well lead to them not, not moving into the building because it's not readily available, second parking space on the site, they might need to park it offsite. But again, the stats would say TOD developments like this, you just don't have every dwelling unit in the building having two park, two cars. That's just not what the stats say.
But even if, even if each unit only had one car, it's still, I don't think you have enough parking.
If, if every unit had one car, you'd have 63 parked cars. 60 spaces onsite would accommodate the vast majority of them. Three people might have to park offsite somewhere. There's a lot of public parking. If needed, we could look into private parking, shared, shared parking agreements. It's not something we've done yet. That's a possibility as well. And also commuting to, for Fairfield to Hartford isn't terribly hard these days either via train, given the Hartford line, which is seemingly getting improved right now. So I like to point that out as well.
Good. Other Commissioners, questions from Mr. Olinsky on traffic?
If not, Mr. Chairman.
But that, Commissioner Francis.
Mr. Olinsky, when, when did you find all these dozens of parking spaces at night? At 6:00 PM, when people got home from work, on the post road and Uncle Row?
I don't have it all in fingertips, but we counted parking closer to later in the evening. The reason we did that, the reason we did that is because the statistics would indicate that even if you have, even at the high end of perhaps generating 75 parked vehicles, the parking demand during the day and into the early evening, it's, it's still going to ramp up to be under 60 parked vehicles based on the stats and not, not even reach that 60 parked vehicles until, or 60 to 75 parked vehicles until 10, 11, 12 at night. And that's why we did the counts that night.
Mr. Olinsky, what was the purpose of doing count at midnight?
As I just mentioned, the stats would indicate, the industry stats. As I just mentioned, the stats would indicate, the industry stats would indicate that the, I mean, residential parking peaks at night. That's when it peaks, which means.
I'm sorry, residential parking demand peaks when residents are coming home from work, generally, would you agree?
Generally speaking.
And they're not.
It ramps up, it ramps up.
Not coming home from work at midnight, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you, sorry. But wouldn't you want to measure the parking demand at peak demand time? And why would the peak demand time for residential parking be midnight?
I could share my screen, I actually have some, it's in our appendix, but we, we can look at the, the estimates we made in, on an hourly basis. Is, is it possible to share my screen?
Yep, you can go ahead.
Okay, it's, and again, this is in our report, it's in the appendix. But the top two rows are the, the peak parking estimates, based on the ITE.
I'm sorry, Mr. Target, is it possible to make that larger? Okay, Mr. Olinsky, would you just zoom in so that we can see the numbers here?
Yes, it's a little, it's a little weird on my end, okay. If I zoom in too much, it gets a bit too far. How, how does that look?
Uh, it's about, probably as good as you're gonna get it, and still be able to.
Still be, yeah. All right, so sixty-three.
Chris, Neil, this is in the appendix to the traffic study?
It is, yes.
Every, I think everybody has a hard copy, but I just wanted to point that out if it wasn't picked up, that's all.
Thank you, Attorney Smith.
Okay, so the top, and I'm gonna try to go through, through this quick, and just not, not, just in respect of everybody's time. So the top two rows are the, the peak parking estimates, based on ITE, we looked at two different land use, what they call land use categories. And we're talking about affordable housing, based on the ITE, peaking at only thirty-five to fifty parked vehicles. A sort of more typical mid-rise apartment building with sixty-three spaces. We're looking at that upwards of seventy to seventy-three, rounded up to seventy-five parked vehicles at night. We go down to the, the middle and the lower rows. When you break that down to, based on the statistics, on the, what they call hourly variation data, peak parking, or a hundred percent peak parking, peaks at night, based on stats for residential buildings. And it dips during the daytime to maybe half of the peak. And it ramps up in the afternoon and evening towards that overnight peak. So even at, say, six PM, you might only have two-thirds or three-quarters of the overnight peak parking demands. So at the high end of the range, if you're talking seventy-five parked vehicles at the very high end of our estimates, parking overnight at the peak times, say at six PM, that estimate is still only, it's fifty-five parked cars, and still less than the sixty parking spaces that are proposed on the site. So I hope this helps to explain it more. But, yeah, it, it's during the day and it ramps up into the evening, and we're not talking about perhaps the use of public parking for this project until later in the evening and at midnight, which is why we counted the public parking at those times.
Mr. Olinsky, this, this does eliminate the, the data on which you, you based your assumptions, but what this data doesn't model, if I'm not, unless I'm mistaken, is the use of this area, in particular Fairfield, for restaurants, nightlife, other uses that have high parking demand at these, what, what, what most people would consider the peak demand time for parking for the residents, which would be in, in the earlier evening, you know, and, and night, rather than the middle of the night. I think what this data, what this ITE data shows is that if you're looking at purely residential development, and not any other, you know, commercial, retail, restaurant use, then you would expect the most cars to be at rest, sedentary, in the middle of the night. But it, it, it doesn't model the particular facts that we have at this site.
Well, again.
Go ahead, Neil.
Well, again, I, I mean, just to be clear, this looks at the development relative to the parking demands we'd estimate based on the stats, and the amount of parking in the site. And all of the public, all, I mean, all of the sites generated, estimated generated parking is expected to be accommodated on-site throughout the bulk of the day, throughout the bulk of the day, and not need to use the public parking during the daytime, or even the early afternoon.
There, there, there's certain peak parking that you estimate may be up to fifteen cars higher than the site can accommodate. In other words, seventy-five cars versus sixty parking spaces on-site, correct?
At the high end of our estimates, correct.
At the high end, right, which is, which is where we should, you know, look at the, the analysis at the pain point, right? So those, those fifteen cars, did you assume in your analysis that there would be assigned parking spaces for any units in the garage? That particular units would have assigned spaces in, in the garage, particularly assigned to them that they would have to park in?
We didn't look into that in, it's probably not necessary. Oftentimes, those don't get kind of looked at and really kind of set until the project gets, after the project gets developed and it's just about to open, really the building management. I think another point I'd like to make is, is come, part, the topic of parking comes up a lot in Stanford, for example. And one of the things they do as conditions of approval is they require follow-up studies, which is a way to look at how things actually play out in the real world, and if there's any hiccups after the fact, there's that condition of approval to come back at, come back to, to address any issues at that time. But based, again, based on our report, and all we can do is make estimates based on the industry data, we expect this to be sufficient.
Okay, you, you also mentioned a limitation of, you know, the, the lease, potentially, that the tenant would only be allowed one car, even if it wasn't assigned a particular dedicated parking space, that each apartment perhaps could be allowed only one car per apartment? Did, did you, did you assume that in your analysis or model that?
That's often how these things work. Again, this is not a very micro detailed analysis, it's a very high level type of thing, which is typical for a traffic study and a parking study.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Smith, if I may.
Yeah.
Well, certainly, we, we can, we can circle back to you on that issue with the, the client hasn't decided that at the moment, whether it's gonna be a first come, first served, but we can, we can nail that down for you for the continued hearing. I do think that, I think that the testimony is fairly, you know, focused on sixty-three units, there's sixty on-site parking spaces. There's an anticipated peak of possibly fifteen over the sixty-three, and there's well, there's hundreds of parking spaces that are available within the five-hundred-foot radius, and, and that's really a marketing question for the client, as it goes forward, if it can't be met. If a potential tenant, I can, I can speak from personal experience with my wife, if, if there's not gonna be adequate parking in the area, if you have to use a public garage, and it's not covered, or it is covered, or you're not gonna be able to get a space, those are all factors that go into marketing the units for, for rent. But again, I, I think that, just try to summarize it, that the position is that there will be potentially a demand of, in excess of the sixty, of the sixty on-site parking spaces, of possibly fifteen at any given time in the evening, which is why Mr. Olinsky looked in the evening, and certainly, I think it's fairly obvious that there's in this immediate area of the, of the railroad station, there's plenty of pu, public parking spaces available, both on the street and within the nearby parking lots to accommodate this parking, and it's really no different than the, the development that was approved, I think in 2020, right on the other side of Ancoa, for where, where there was one, one space per unit. So again, it's a, it's, it's a marketing question for the client, and I think that the testimony is, is clear on that there's gonna be plenty of spaces available at this property. It's somewhat unique because of its proximity to the train station and all this public parking area. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Smith. I have one last question for Mr. Olinsky, which is that if there is potentially fifteen cars attempting to park for which there are not spaces during the peak demand time in the evening, for, for example, and there's not, you know, dedicated parking spaces per unit, or a limit of one space per car, one, one space per unit, then aren't these excess cars going to be coming in and out of the garage, looking for parking?
That could be a possibility. But I don't think that's a downtown development of this sort.
Uh, any other, other commissioners? Commissioner Braun, and then Commissioner Kent.
I'm looking at your document called App Traffic Fifteen, I guess it's your traffic report in the appendix. Can you? There's, there's a couple of maps towards the end, like page nineteen or twenty-one. Is, are these the aerials that show where the off-site parking is gonna be located, or do you, have you identified exactly where the off-site parking is anticipated to be available? You say, somewhere in the report it said there would be a hundred and three spaces within a radius of Finalon, four hundred feet, maybe? There's something called E, D, C, H, and it looks like it's randomly all over the area. Is that, are those supposed to be the off-site parking overflow areas?
I think, I think we just had a slide, Commissioner Braun, that depicted that. I'm not sure if we can pull it up again, but I think of all the particular lots with the spaces that were actually counted by, by SLR, are spelled out right there. Looks like A to.
Do you identify where the lots are, and what time of day you counted the empty spaces?
Right there.
Right there, yep. And as I mentioned, we counted them at, at midnight on a Friday and Saturday. We also counted it Saturday morning, I think, at eight o'clock. And we counted at essentially the on-site, the on-street parking on Ancoa, that's highlighted, on Sanford Street, that's highlighted, as well as in these parking lots.
Put that in the, in the parking, in the traffic report? Or is that in the presentation slides? Okay. That's right.
Yeah, so we, we, we put these specifically in our report, in the bulk, in the, the body of our report. We counted additional parking as well, which is what you're looking at in the appendix, which is hundreds of additional parking spaces that were empty at night.
Train station, right?
Correct.
Isn't that permitted?
Not overnight, in fact, there's a sign at the entrance that says it's free overnight, free parking after five o'clock, between five PM and seven AM, and it's free all weekend. And that's the sign right at the entrance.
That, so, but the hundred and three spaces that you're assuming close by, aside from the train station, those are in random, small parking areas around the street of Sanford, Ancoa, Post Road?
Correct.
And those all have the two-hour limit, right?
But not overnight.
So for overnight, starting, what, six or seven PM until six in the morning?
Correct, there's no time limit.
Old restaurant and nightlife businesses, I guess.
But again, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point. We looked at the stats, it doesn't look like any overflow of parking would even happen till ten or eleven o'clock at night. Thus, between five and ten o'clock, when people are coming home from work, as it ramps up and the demands for this project, demand, the parking demands for this project increase as the afternoon and evening goes on, it's going to fill the parking lot on the site, and not perhaps need any off-site parking until ten, midnight.
Okay, and the source of information for the actual demand for parking for people who live in this, a hundred and six people or so that might be living there, is only sixty or maybe seventy-five that would need a car?
That's correct, based on the industry data.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes, to go back to using that midnight data, I take a little issue with that, because we already have so many complaints from people trying to find parking for dinner and other downtown activities that take place when people are coming home from work, that my concern is that the overflow parking is gonna put an even bigger burden on the existing businesses there. Additionally, I don't know if you took into account what happens if there's an event at the FTC, you'll have a large influx of cars there, so unless you have assigned parking, you are gonna have residents going in and out of the parking garage, trying to find parking when they come home from work, which is going to affect your traffic and safety. So I, I have very real concerns that your parking estimates aren't adequate, or your parking plan, unless you proactive, you know, the, 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 the owner proactively puts in requirements that there will be assigned parking. And then those three units that don't have parking are kind of out of luck. I'm not sure how you would handle that, but I would be hesitant to move forward without the consideration for the businesses there that need on-site, on-street parking to operate.
Other commissioners?
As far as the assigned parking spaces, we will get back to you on that, Commissioner Kent.
Other questions for Mr. Olinsky? Going once, twice. Attorney Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Joe Versteg, and Mr. Versteg has been, he's actually remote with another hearing. I, I think he's available at the moment, and he will address the fire safety emergency issues. Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Joe Versteg. I'm the principal of the Stig Associates LLC. I'm an independent consultant based in Torrington, Connecticut, for building and fire safety codes. I have reviewed this project individually, or independently, rather, for compliance with the current Connecticut State Building Code, Fire Safety Code, and Fire Prevention Code, which, as you know, are adopted to Connecticut general statutes by the legislature, and enacted as administrative regulations that both your building official and your fire marshal will follow during the compliance analysis of the building during the permit stage, and during the inspection stage. I've also looked at the building for compliance with the proposed Connecticut codes, which are scheduled to take effect in October of this year. If everything goes as scheduled, of course, that usually never happens. But there are not a lot of dramatic changes, so any adjustments that will be made as a result of those documents will certainly be made to the documents prior to submission for building permit application. Also, as you know, the, the codes are fairly specific, very objective. They leave very little room for, for subjective application. And, and with regards to, as I said, the, the requirements for the building code that take care of the structural integrity of the building, as well as the health and welfare, the safety of the occupants during the normal use, and under emergency conditions, which are also mirrored by the Fire Safety Code and the Fire Prevention Code. This building's not gonna present any negative impact on a, on, on the safety of the community or the occupants. You happy to take any questions, if you have?
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Braun?
I'm just looking at the code review minutes from August fourth of 2020. Could you just confirm whether these two items were addressed? Our fire department wanted you to provide utility line calculations for domestic and fire protection plans, as well as, they pointed out that it's not good to have garbage containers in the parking garage, have those been removed from the parking garage?
Right. Understand that, that the degree of specifications and information that you get at the planning and zoning stage, and here, you know, if it's a, a five-story building, you get five sets of plans, and you get some elevations, and you get some site plans. Come time for construction, this probably, the application or the documents that are submitted for building application, I would suspect for this project will be two rolls of drawings, probably in the range of a hundred and forty sheets each, detailing the architectural, the mechanical, the electrical plumbing, as well as accessibility and structural. In addition, there will also be what we call specifications, or project manuals, those are eight and a half by eleven-inch paper specifications that go into tremendous detail, probably forty pages on just. Probably forty pages on just the operation of the fire alarm, probably another, just for example, fifteen pages on just the sheet rock materials that are within the building. So all of these items are never submitted at a planning and zoning phase. In fact, if you look at this list, most of these items are going to be addressed during, during the plane review compliance phase by your building official and your fire marshal. So the answer is no, they have not been specifically addressed at this point in time.
The utility line calculations, what is the purpose of that? Is that utility line that happened to be situated in front of the building that could affect access, or is that something else?
No, typically under the fireside, when I talk about utility lines, the building's going to have a sprinkler system. It's going to have a certain demand of water and a certain amount of pressure required to make it operate and function efficiently. And, and most likely what the fire marshal is referring to is have you evaluated the amount of water in the street? And will there be sufficient pressure and water available for that system to operate effectively? And again, those hydraulic calculations, as we refer to them, that tell us how much water is available and how much pressure is needed are done at the time of the design for the sprinkler system.
So this is a high, this is considered a high-rise building, which is considered higher risk compared to a low-rise, a low building, right?
This is not a high-rise building.
What's a high-rise building?
It's a hi, a high-rise building is a building where the highest occupiable floor level exceeds seventy-five feet above where the fire department vehicle parks. So you would measure from Stanford Road on one side to the floor of the highest occupiable floor. And then you would measure from the other side, Anqua, and whichever gave you the greatest distance, it would be, it would be that distance. Here, the entire building's only sixty-six feet in height. So it's not a high-rise, and as such, the high-rise provisions of the codes do not come into play.
My understanding, a medium hazard building would be a three-story garden apartment, or a high hazard structure would be something higher than that. That's why I was calling this a high-rise, I might have had a misnomer there, but it seems like, would this be a high hazard structure?
No, absolutely not. High hazards are, are typically the storage of hazardous materials wherein you expect explosions and very rapidly going, growing fires, chemical plants, dust explosions, industrial occupancies, things of that nature.
So it's a six-story building, higher hazard than a three-story building, right, for safety's sake?
Not necessarily. Understanding that wha, what you have in a single-family home, a ranch or, or colonial or Cape, the contents within that and the arrangement of the fuel load is really no different than if you're on the third floor or the fifty-fifth floor. What does come into play to address that is more stringent requirements based on the fact that you are going up in height. For example, in a three-story building that's residential, you can have a thirteen-hour sprinkler system, which omits sprinklers in certain areas because it's not intended to provide the full protection that the sprinkler system in this building would provide. It also would not require stand pipes because the floor, the highest occupiable floor is only going to be less than thirty feet above grade. So they anticipate the ease of the firefighter to carry the hoses up. So as you go taller, more stories, the code builds in more protections. It increases the fire resistance rating of the actual structure itself. It changes the requirements that you can build out of wood and it goes to non-combustible materials. It adds in stand pipes in the stairwell so that the firefighters don't have to carry hose up four, five, six flights of stairs, et cetera.
Regarding the garbage containers in the parking garage, I don't remember what they said last time. Are they in the parking garage or not in the parking garage?
I don't recall, I'd have to check. And that really would be a question for the architect.
Our fire depart, is the architect here? Do you remember, I mean, you would know, right?
And we can check on that and get back as part of our rebuttal on that question.
I'd like to know now, if possible, I mean, the architect is here.
Commissioner Braun, it is in the parking garage.
It's in the parking garage, so our fire department felt that it should not be in the parking garage, I'm not sure why, do you know why? Mr. Fire, Mr. Vertig, Verstig? Is there a reason why fire garbage containers should not be in the parking garage?
No, there's no reason for that. Here, if you notice in item seven of Fire Marshal Higgins' report, it says it's not good to have them in there. It's not necessarily bad.
Okay, thank you. I guess we have a disagreement between you and our fire department. Thank you.
Mr. Wang, is it possible to get clarity from the fire marshal on that comment? Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Verstig. So I, I, I may have missed as many were talking, is this immediate, would this be considered a medium hazard building? Sorry, I didn't quite get all that.
Well, there's no such category as medium. There are, under the Fire Safety Code, we talk about things that are low hazard, ordinary and high. Low hazard are basically things that inherently won't burn. So you think of the storage of bricks, sand, metal buckets of water. When you go to the other extreme of high hazard contents, you think of things that can readily explode or very rapidly flash fire. So the use of flammable liquid spray applications in a factory or spraying furniture with lacquer, extremely dangerous, a lot of added protections for that. The storage of flammable liquids in barrels or in drums or containers, things of that nature. Poisons, corrosants. So we're not, you typically never deal with low hazard and you hardly ever deal with high hazard. Everything else in between is called ordinary hazard. It is those things that burn with what we call moderate rapidity, from which you get large volumes of smoke. So your living room, your bedroom, the contents of a high-rise apartment, the contents of a low-rise apartment, a business occupancy, a hospital, they're all in the category of low hazard, or ordinary hazard contents.
Great, thank you for that clarity. And I have another question. Are there, from what I understand, there are staffing recommendations, if you will, from the industry, I think it's from NFPA. There's a standard, I think. Can you talk, like, is there a requirement to have a certain amount of firefighters if there was, God forbid, a fire at this, you know, six-story building downtown Fairfield? Are, are there requirements or recommendations that you could speak to?
Yeah, what you're referring to is the National Fire Protection Association has two standards. One is NFPA and the standard number is one, seven, one, zero. And that's the standard for what they call career fire departments. We are at least fifty percent of the people that would be responding to the fire are, are career firefighters or paid or on duty. The other standard is NFPA seventeen, twenty, one, seven, two, zero. And that deals with volunteer fire departments where, and, and, and again, you may have in a, in a volunteer fire department, you may have a paid chief and a paid driver, but more than eighty-five percent of the people that respond from wherever they are, sometimes they're out of town, are going to be volunteer and not paid. Each one of those standards i- is not a specification, nuts and bolts kind of document with hardcore timeframes and numbers. Both of those require, and they're not mandatory, by the way, it's just, it's a, it's a, a a best practice, if you will, the best foot forward by the experts that have been assembled by the NFPA. And it's really organizational documents that tell you how to organize and give you guidance on the deployment of your fire suppression forces. And in some cases, you know, they, they will tell you that you have to be able to respond or acknowledge an alarm coming in within, you know, say forty seconds. And then you have to get moving and respond to that within, say, ninety seconds. And that's, that's usually easily done, and that's where the timeframes stop. Because what they don't set timeframes on is how long does it take to get to the fire? And the reason for that is you may have a very big jurisdiction where it's a twenty-minute ride, even though you're a paid fire department. Or it may be a very compressed environment, as in New York City, where there's almost a firehouse on every other corner. And then you have to evaluate how many people is it going to take for you to do certain things? You know, your command structure, your first fire suppression forces. And don't forget, in, in a, in a, a new residential building, other than a single-family home or townhouse, it's required to have a sprinkler system. So the first responding fire truck is going to access the fire hydrant and is going to connect to the standpipe system, the fire department connection, and they're going to use the fire truck and the city water to augment what's in the sprinkler system. So don't forget that the sprinkler systems are activating probably in a typical room fire, if you can visualize your living room or your bedroom, if it had a sprinkler system in it, that's, that fire is probably going to be, if you were to visualize it in a, in a metal trash can, the amount of fire flame that you would visually see is probably going to be about anywhere from your belt height to mid-chest. And that sprinkler system's going to activate. So yeah, your, your stuff's on fire, but it's not general, generating a lot of heat. It's in a confined location. Fires do not spread laterally, left and right. It's not generating a lot of smoke. What smoke is being generated is not highly particulate. It doesn't have chunks of stuff to plug you, it doesn't have the generation of poison gases in it yet because it hasn't reached that lethal stage. And that's the stage at which the sprinkler system activates. And in one, in ninety-seven percent of the cases, one sprinkler will extinguish a typical room content fire. And in the other three percent, no more than two or three sprinklers activate. So it's extremely effective. You find people who own apartment buildings, as well as fire marshals and fire chiefs will tell you that the biggest problem they have resulting fires in apartment buildings is the water cleanup. Because it activates so quickly, puts the fire out, and yet the sprinkler system continues to operate, so you get water damage.
So that's, that's very helpful, and thank you for that education clarity. So in your estimation, I mean, sounds like this, this is unlikely, it probably happened, but we do have enough career firefighters to, to combat something, if something did go awry, God forbid?
Yes, and, and you know, and according to the, to the, the, the website for the Fairfield Fire Department, it states that there are, at any one time, twenty-three career firefighters on duty to respond to an emergency. And based on when they have, you know, snow conditions where they anticipate difficulty of people coming back to work, they have callback provisions and protocols where they can bring additional people in, call back off-duty firemen. And don't forget, every fire department relies on mutual aid with adjoining fire departments that are, that are staffed and ready to go. So if you were to get a fire at, at, at a particular building, the Fairfield Fire Department has already evaluated whether they're going to need help on that or not. And most likely, they're going to call at the same time they go, respond, they're going to have their neighboring communities start to come towards the building in case they need them for that additional manpower, and if not, can always send them back.
All right, and, and then NFPA, do they, is that, do they require twenty-eight firefighters on scene, eight minutes?
No, no, there's, there's no timeframe in the minutes.
Okay, what about numbers of fire personnel?
It depends on the yearly edition of the standard you look at. The more current standard, the nineteen, the two thousand and twenty standard does give recommendations for numbers of people. But again, that's simply recommendations.
So what is that recommendation for a building of this size?
Well, you'd have to interpolate because the examples they give are a, a, a very large, single-family home and then a, a, a three-story apartment building and then a high-rise, so this building is neither. So you would have to interpolate between the two, and I haven't done that, that analysis yet. I'm sure the fire department will when they start to look at their staffing and, and budget options. But for the most part, the twenty-three staff that are on duty should be able to more than competently respond to and, and begin suppression operations. Don't forget, it only takes one or two people to connect the fire truck to the, to the hydrant and to the, to the fire department connection. You need a minimum of four people on site, that's the OSHA rule of two in, two out, you don't let anybody go in by themselves. And you don't let any two people go in without having two people nearby in case they get in trouble to go rescue them. So the twenty-three on site provides more than enough.
Thank you.
The commissioners, questions for Mr. Verstig about fire safety, life safety? Commissioner Braun?
Are your findings in a report, I don't think I saw them in the master application package?
No, well, my findings are in an April eighth letter to the commission that basically says that I have reviewed the plans and specifications independently and determined compliance with the the Connecticut Building Code, Fire Code, and Fire Prevention Code. So all of the discussions resulted, responses to questions tonight are not in that, that report.
The, as far as the access from the street, you're talking about access on both Anqua Road and Sanford Street, right? So you're talking about distance access and fire hydrant access, and does it matter if cars are parked all along both those roads, does that affect your access at all?
No, you need to have, the code requires a twenty-foot wide access roadway. And if you're parking cars on it, it's from edge of car to edge of car.
And given that you have to interpolate between what's called a garden apartment of three stories and what's called a high-rise, which you said is seventy-five feet?
Right.
Is that more than twenty-three firefighters are required? I mean, you don't, you haven't done the math, so it could be that more are required than what we have on our staff at any one time?
Right, and don't forget, when they say high-rise, they're assuming that it's, it meets the definition of a high-rise, seventy-five feet or more and up to, you know, whatever you can structurally build it to, you know?
So somewhere between three stories and seventy-five stories, the number goes up from twenty-three to something higher than that in terms of full-time firefighters on duty?
Well, when you get into high-rise, the extra manpower, I mean, fighting the fire in, in the three-story building, you're dragging the hose up the stairs, so you're, you're stretching out hose. So each firefighter's carrying an armful of hose plus the nozzle, and you, and you're laying that hose up the stairs and so forth. In addition to the firefighters that are doing search and rescue and ventilation. In a, in a taller building, because of the sprinkler system and the standpipes, they're carrying less hose, it's easier to get up to the floor that's on fire. When you start to deal with high-rise, other specialized systems come into play. You now get into firefighter stairways where they're smoke protected, meaning that they're pressurized to keep smoke out of the stairway or the stairway environment is exhausted, so whatever smoke does get in gets readily exhausted off. You need a fireman in the command center who's trained and knowledgeable to be able to evaluate whether those systems are in operation and, and whether we need the smoke management system in the stairs reactivated or turned off. We need to know where the elevator cars are, and the firefighter in the command center can control those cars. He can bring them down and lock them out so that no one uses them. And anybody in it
Well, let me just clarify, I'm sorry, just to clarify so I can sort of conclude this conversation. Is there a number of career firefighters on duty that are required at the garden apartment level, which is three stories, versus the seventy-five-foot tall building, which is basically one story higher than this one? Are there different numbers that you would expect to have as full-time available firefighters in town? Is there a metric that says that, or a requirement or guideline that says that?
No, there is not. And again, remember that they're not, these are not requirements, these are recommendations. And it's up to the chief operating officer, uh, and if you have a board of public safety, to evaluate your community on a continuing basis. Look at what's taking place and, and evaluate whether you can, you can handle this or not.
So basically, if it appears as though we did not have enough for the sixty, you know, six-story building, we, that would then be a town budget fire planning safety issue that would have to accommodate it?
Yeah, if the chief chose to do so. I mean, there are, there are many police, there, I mean, your town has an organized police department. Because you, you chose to, to have one, you know how many people y- you know, you have, you know, your crime rate and so forth. Um, you go to other towns in the state, most of them do not have police departments. Uh, most of them have a state trooper driving through. Or if they're willing to pay for it, a resident state trooper. Um, the decision to go to your own police department is very expensive because you lose all the services that the state provides. And the same with the fire department, do, do you want a paid fire department? And then how many do you want? And how many stations? We go through that with our town every year, and, you know, we have two paid stations in the city of Torrington, and like twelve fires.
And getting back to you, okay, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Getting back to utility line calculations, is it possible that there would not be an adequate water pressure or whatever, uh, to handle an out-of-control fire in the sixty-five foot tall building? And would you, is that a possibility? And if so, how would that be handled, uh, since we don't have those calculations now?
Yeah, um, the information is gotten from, uh, the water company as far as the size of the main and the street and, and the volume, uh, you're probably upwards around sixteen-hundred gallons a minute, uh, based on prior projects in town. The water that comes out of a sprinkler system is extremely minimal. Uh, that one sprinkler, you're talking eighteen gallons a minute. You know, two sprinklers operating is thirty-six. The larger demand would be the, the host streams from the fire department, and that would only be, uh, five hundred gallons a minute. If you had insufficient pressure, which is, which is pretty common, uh, if you look at New Haven, uh, anything above the third floor, um, the waters are trickle. So the buildings put in fire pumps. To augment the sprinkler system. The building is, you can augment the pressure by the installation of a fire pump. Which boosts the pressure.
So in other words, you're saying that after, if this project gets approved and if there's insufficient water, there'd be some requirements that you add a fire pump to your building design at that point?
That would be based on a, would be based on a calculated need, whether we need one or not.
And where would a fire pump go in the design that you have here? Or what?
It would be at the lowest level. Will be up to the architect to put it in.
In the garage?
Well, it'd be in its own rated, in its own room.
Joe, I think from a stand, standpoint, we can look into this, this issue, uh, further and report back to the commission in an appropriate way, we're speculating at the moment, and I prefer that you not speculate, thank you.
Okay, uh, other questions for Mr. Verstig? The commission, uh, Attorney Smith.
Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes our presentation. We look forward to hearing from the intervenor and the public and being able to respond in our rebuttal. Uh, and also to follow up with questions that we heard from the, uh, commission uh, over the course of the hearing today, thank you.
Very good, uh, at this time, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, the intervenor, uh, under the Environmental Protection Act, uh, Mr. Redgate. Uh, if he could, uh, begin his presentation.
You should pick up if you just, maybe a click there. I've got a loud voice.
Do you want me to go ahead and start your presentation?
No, no, not yet, we may not even get, but that's all right. On number one, thank you for, uh, letting us, uh, be here tonight. I'd like to, uh, introduce myself first, my name is Leo Redgate. Uh, lifelong resident here in Fairfield. Uh, I'd like to correct the record just to, to make sure it's not a big deal, uh, but I think it would be a, uh, uh, I want to make sure that everyone knows that, uh, I am not the petitioner. Uh, Fairfield Center Alliance is the petitioner. Uh, and I would appreciate it if the petitioner be referred to as the Fairfield Center Alliance from now on. I'm happy to be the representative of that, of, of that group of concerned, uh, citizens. And I'm honored to represent anyone who wants to join that group. So, uh, I'm a real estate investor, have been for twenty-five, I hate to say, close to thirty years. I've also done some small developments, uh, and very, very large developments. Uh, not only here in Fairfield, some smaller ones here in Fairfield. Uh, the, the Fairfield Post Office downtown Fairfield. Uh, uh, the repurposing of that, uh, while maintaining the historic facade of it, uh, worked very, very well with the, the zoning, uh, I think that was Z B A, I'm not sure. Uh, or, or zoning, uh, as well as the old Blinn's Toy Store, uh, which is right next to, uh, the new development going on, next to the train station on Uncle Place. Uh, and we, uh, did a bill to sue for a ten-thousand square foot medical uh, thing there, and I believe that was a Z B A application because of the change of use. Fully parked it, uh, uh, per the, per the recommendations. Uh, I also do want to say, uh, I've done, uh, projects across the country, uh, in Dallas, Texas, Nashville, Washington D.C. and Florida. Uh, but I, on, on occasion, I think I've done two in the past eight years here in Fairfield. Uh, other than that, I don't do anything in Connecticut at this time. Uh, in full disclosure, I, I have met Dr. Forrest, uh, a long time ago when I was, uh, running the nonprofit community theater. I also knew Frank Somm relatively well, and, and he was quite a character and very good local personality that I enjoyed talking to, uh, a lot. Uh, I also wanted to let you know that I did reach out to, uh, Attorney Smith, who I have nothing, uh, but high regard for and hold him in high regard. And he has been nothing but fantastic for me to reach out to. I did reach out, uh, roughly about a month ago to, uh, uh, inquire if, if, you know, that this was going to be a development that was going to get approved. Is there some way that we could stop it, including me, uh, paying for the property, even a premium for the property? Uh, at which, and, and, and Attorney Smith graciously, uh, forwarded that on to Dr. Forrest and his family. Uh, and I have not heard anything, and I just want to make it very clear that I have no interest in the property from a financial standpoint. Uh, if I did ever acquire the property for, uh, a chance or whatever, uh, I would work closely with, I would basically give it, make sure the town goes out for an R F P, make sure that things are done by the local zoning laws. Uh, uh, so I'm not here in any way, shape or form as a, it, to have any financial gain whatsoever from this. And I'm happy to have that be on the record. Uh, before I introduce Stephen, uh, Trinkus, who's a very, very good civil engineer, well, I'll let him speak for himself. I think he's very good. Uh, I, I'd like to, with the, with the, uh, commission's approval, just address a couple of things that have been brought up. And Jim, I'm not sure if this is the right purview. Uh, it's not in anything that I have presented, it's just some of the things, I'm not sure if I'm free to speak. Has the commission decided that I'm free to speak on any item, or is that?
Uh, well, that's up to the chair.
That's up to the chair, sorry, Mr. Chair.
So, uh,
We can start with what?
Mr. Redgate, why don't you start with, um, the petition, the, the matters that are issued in the petition?
Great, great, good.
For environmental and nature, and then if you have other comments after that, essentially as a member of the public?
Fine.
You can make those.
Whatever, whatever you guys feel is best, I appreciate the time.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, so Stephen, uh, if you would like to just introduce yourself, I know your twenty-eight-page C V speaks for itself. But, uh, if you'd like to give the, the commission and the public a little bit of background on your experience, just so you know, I'm not an attorney. Uh, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn last night, so I like to think, uh, I, I, we, we're, we're representing ourselves here today, so.
You're in fine tower.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, commission members, uh, my name is Stephen Trinkus, I'm a licensed professional engineer with an office in Southbury, Connecticut, I've been licensed in Connecticut since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, since the early two thousands, I've, uh, acquired a lot of expertise in low-impact development, which is a focus on water quality, uh, runoff volumes, which causes flooding, and how to address these particular issues. Um, I've appeared before this commission, um, uh, with applicants proposing projects and also, um, in, on the other side of the fence, uh, so to speak. Um, I was asked by Leo to review the plans, I reviewed, uh, the site plans by Larry Edwards, the stormwater management plan, um, the, the town of Fairfield staff comments, um, and the architectural plans. Um, I'm going to just temporarily skip over the executive summary of my report, which is on the first page, and kind of get into the information on page two going forward, I'll come back to it. Um, to make it easier for the commission, um, I referred, uh, by the plan sheets in the applicant set. So as an example, sheet E one, which is the existing conditions map, that needs to be signed and sealed by a licensed land surveyor, even in electronic format. Um, ever since COVID came around, um, in many towns, we've had to submit PDF plans with our signature and seals on them because they have, uh, I believe from a, uh, executive order from Governor Lamont, become the record drawings instead of the printed plans, which we've always buried the commissions in paperwork in the past. Um, sheet E two, I had no comments on that, uh, getting into the actual site plans. Sheet number S one, we have an underground, uh, a ramp that comes down from Sanford Street to the lower, the low-ground parking, uh, uh, i- under the building, there's no, there's.
Does everyone have it, I see some people fumbling.
Is, is it possible to show these sheets on the screen?
If your staff, if your staff can, yeah, I, you know.
I can't see it on my computer, but that's not very good.
Emily, I just.
The sheet she's referring to, is it possible?
In the meantime, we, we do have the hard copies. What's that?
Yeah, these are, these are, you know, the site plans by, uh, Larry Edwards Associates. Um, so, you know.
Are you referring to these sheets, this is what you're reading off, the one that was just handed to us? Yes?
Yeah, it's from my report, but I'm referencing the plan sheets by the applicant.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, um, so there, there's a ramp from Sanford Street to the underground parking. There is no grading on the civil site plan. There is information on the architectural plans, but you need to have the grading on the site plan to make sure that from a civil design standpoint, for the movement of vehicles, that it is safe and adequate to get from Sanford Street to the underground parking garage. Um, the architectural plans show a ten percent grade from Sa- Sanford Street into the site for a little bit, and then going to fifteen percent. And then the parking garage is basically as level as this table. Well, there's several problems with that. A ten percent grade coming in off a road intersection is too steep. It is not safe for vehicles. You want a landing area for a car coming up that's six percent or less. Because you want basically a level area going, a car is coming out. You know, he's more or less level, he's not on an incline. So the grade, uh, from Sanford Street going into the parking garage has to be six percent or less. Ten percent is too steep. Additionally, the outside part of this ramp is exposed to the great outdoors. And where I live in Southbury, we tend to get more snow, but ha- my father, when he taught in Darien, there were many times when I, we had snow days up in Reading where I grew up. And he had to go to school because they had, they had icing, but it wasn't enough to cause a problem. When you've got a ten percent ramp and you get black ice conditions, it becomes a ski ramp right down into the building, that's clearly not a safe condition. Also, between changes of grade, there's a requirement that we have a vertical curve. So you cannot have, you know, two grades basically like this where a point, you have to have a curve that is a, a transitional zone, uh, between the two different grades. When you get down to the bottom, you're going down a fifteen percent grade. Now, that is fifteen feet in a hundred, to give you an idea. And then you're going to dead levels, so you basically have something steep coming down here. You've got a, basically a spot where a car can get hung up simply between the two changes in grade. Um, if you go with a six percent grade coming in and then a transition to fifteen, and then a transition to a zero grade, this driveway entrance is going to be much farther under the building than the applicant shows. So you're going to affect some of the parking spaces under the building because the ramp itself is going to get longer to get there. When you go down the ramp, you're making a ninety-degree turn left into the parking garage. Now, going down, it appears that a car can make that ninety-degree turn. However, a car exiting the garage has to make a very sharp right-hand turn and be go up at a fifteen percent grade. It, there has not been demonstrated, uh, by any vehicle movement that a car can come out of the parking garage, make that right-hand turn without going into the lane for the guy coming down into the parking garage. That clearly is a, a, a safety issue because you can have a conflict of the two, um, you know, vehicle movements. Um, you know, similarly on sheet S one, um, uh, by the applicant, you know, there's a, there's no spot elevations on the underground parking garage, uh, both under the building and the, on, one underground. The applicant does show several internal floor drains, for lack of a better term. A, they're not connected, but there are some areas where there is no grading shown to direct the water to these drains. And even an underground parking garage, you are going to have stormwater to deal with because cars are going to come in, they're wet from the rain. Or in the winter with snow, you know, it sticks to your bumpers, you know, you park in your garage at home, I think we all have this experience. The stuff melts and you have a, you know, small puddle or a lake in your garage, depending how much snow is accumulated. So that has to be addressed, and the water has to be able to drain to a low point. And there's a lack of information, uh, for that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trinkus, your, your, your point is that because you don't know what the elevations are at particular points in the parking garage, you believe that the grade could be such at certain points in the garage that the snow melt will not go toward the floor drains?
Correct, it will not drain, it will just sit on a flat portion of the, you know, the basement floor.
Okay.
Um, and not get there.
Um, and, and if you did, it, I'm just trying to, uh, make a sort of a fine point. But if you did have that information for the spot elevation, uh, is it possible you would conclude that the sm- snow melt will go into those drains? Or is it your belief that, based on the information you have seen, that it will not go into the drain?
Based on what's on the plans, the runoff from many places in the garage will simply not get to the drain. If the information is provided, uh, in an appropriate manner, the water should drain from a flatter portion of the garage to the drain itself. Now, in the basement level, there is also a, uh, I believe it's a hydrodynamic separator shown. Uh, but none of the, uh, uh, floor drains are shown connecting to the separator. I think the intent is to connect them, but nothing is shown, no piping is shown. Um, furthermore, um, and I ran into this on a project in Westport where we had underbuilding parking. The Connecticut D E P back in the late eighties has a policy statement that under, underbuilding parking, underground parking, I should say, you have to, the stormwater that's generated from that underground level has to be treated by a hydrodynamic separator or other treatment system and then pumped to the sanitary sewer system. They do not let it go to your stormwater management system. So in this case, with the underground parking, while there is a separator shown, there is no pump shown, nor is there any way to get this water out to, um, the sanitary sewer system on Sanford Street. And again, if you can't get the water out, the assumption is the water's going to, you know, fill up and then it's going to pool within the basement floor area. Um, there's also, it appears to be a conflict, uh, between the site plans, uh, by Larry Edwards and the architectural plans in some of the parking spaces that I don't see how you get into certain spaces. Space number seven is one that just, I don't see how a car can get in and out of it. So I think you may actually have functionally less parking than the sixty spaces that the applicant, um, is claiming here. Um, I've worked on many eight-dash-thirty G, you know, uh, three in Fairfield, um, in Milford, in Stanford, um, and in Bethel, Connecticut. Um, even though you're in a T O D zone, and the, you know, the, the state's intent with T O D zones is that the higher-density housing is closer to a train station with the idea that the people are taking the train to Stanford, Greenwich, New York City. But having less than one space per unit is not going to function because we all have cars, even if we live in a T O D apartment, because we do other things on weekends. So right off the bat, you have a deficit of three spaces at a minimum. I think the commission's questions earlier are right on point, that there isn't inadequate parking. Now, when I came down, uh, to briefly meet, uh, Now, when I came down to briefly meet Leo before the meeting, we met at, I guess, what's the name of the-
Are you advertising it?
Well, no, well-
Have they paid it?
The little restaurant next to the site, north, north of, north of the site. And I found a parallel space on the road. Now, when we left the restaurant, I went out to where the driveway entrance is to the underbuilding parking, not the underground. And I just squatted down for, because the three and a half feet, because that's the distance a sight line is taken. So, you look from a three and a half foot target to a three and a half foot, a three and a half foot site to a three and a half foot target out in the travel lane. Well, I looked to the right, towards the railroad. There were two Jeeps in the way. I couldn't see past the Jeeps. So, if a car was coming down Sanford Street, and I was sitting there waiting to pull out, I can't see that car at all. Now, granted, if the parking's not there, you can see the road is basically level. Similarly, looking to the south towards the post road, there were also cars in the line of sight for a vehicle entering, exiting the site. So, there's two problems with, with that. As first off, a car that comes up out of the garage, either way, you know, and pulls out, if he's 10 foot back from the edge of the travel lane, he's not going to be able to see a car traveling on Sanford Street because you have parked vehicles on either side. So, what do we do in that situation? We tend to creep out a little bit more so we can try to see around the cars. Now, I'm creeping out, now somebody may be coming down from the railroad station area on Sanford Street, all of a sudden, the, you know, end of my car sticks out, and he may not see me coming out, and you have a T-bone accident. And that can happen in either direction because you have absolutely no sight line exiting either one of these driveways because of the parked cars on the east side of Sanford Street. They are right in the way. Yes, you have a question?
What about the DOT guideline that was referenced earlier?
DOT, you know, I've done sight lines both from, on municipal projects and, you know, projects where under DOT jurisdiction. DOT jurisdiction generally requires 15 feet back from the white line, the edge of the travel lane, and then you look at, you know, again, a three and a half foot, you know, position of your eye to a three and a half foot target in the road for a car that's moving. And, you know, but that's fine on DOT roads. Many local regulations require 10 times the posted speed limit for a sight line. So, a 25 mile an hour road would be 250 foot. And again, many towns will say, you know, somewhere between 10 and 15 feet. It's not a given. But if you sit in your car, you know, from the front of your car to your driver's seat is likely seven or eight foot at most, unless you're in a very large SUV. So, even if you take the 10 foot from the white line, or in this case, the outside of the parking space, you're, you're not going to see anything because you're looking right into the parked car. That's where I squatted down tonight, and I looked, and all I saw was two Jeeps right there. I couldn't see anything beyond it. And even if there was a higher vehicle, a big SUV, coming down Sanford, I still wouldn't have seen him because these Jeeps were in very close proximity to my eyesight, so I have to go way up and over them.
The traffic report had a few suggestions, but I think they had more to do with pedestrian safety than anything else. They had, they said, we should have some kind of like a verbal or command or something, like telling pedestrians to stop, and then another thing, like a stop sign for people exiting. Would that solve any of these problems?
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm going to couch it, but I've done land development for 40-plus years, so, you know, I've, I've had the experience doing this. You have a pedestrian walkway just to the north of this site, and you have, you know, when we were there, there were walkers, there were also people on bicycles coming out. So, again, you have cars pulling out of here, and, you know, and I'm a road biking person, you know, I'll look at intersections. If I'm crossing a sidewalk, I don't really look for other cars there, you know, and probably I should. So, some signage here because of the pedestrian walkway would definitely be necessary, but it's not going to change the situation with a car exiting the garage because the parked vehicles are there. And they were, that whole road was parked. I left my space and somebody took it 30 seconds after I left it.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
As far as that goes. So, based on the, you know, my experience with other 8-30Gs, for studio and one bedrooms, we use a ratio of 1.25 spaces per unit, and then for two bedrooms, we generally go to one and a half spaces. So, based on the applicant's breakdown of the number of units, you should have 89 parking spaces here, or, you know, 30 more than what the applicant is proposing. So, this is a deficit of parking. I heard the, you know, the testimony earlier of the traffic engineer, you know, there's the train station parking, there's all these other parking. Well, I will tell you tonight, just my visual experience of being there, there wasn't any available parking. Now, also, if you think from the practical side, if I'm living in this building, and I come home, and I've gone to the grocery store, and I drive in my, the two garages, and there's no parking spaces, well, what am I going to do to get rid of my groceries? Nothing. If I have to park in the train station, now I've got to park there, and I've got to lug my groceries back. It's not practical. You have to have adequate parking on the premises for your project, in my professional opinion. You, you know, if you're having guests over, yeah, using train station parking for visitor parking or that may be unacceptable, but you've got to have adequate parking for the residents. And you're right, you know, two-bedroom units, you might have one person, you might have two, you might have three people, and they very well could have cars because we do other things, you know, on weekends, as far as that goes. There, from a stormwater management perspective on the site plan, on number nine on the second, third page, there's a rain garden proposed off Sanford Street. There's no grading associated for it. Rain gardens or buyer retention, which is the former LID name, you know, are infiltration practices. And, but there's no grading on it, so how can, if it gets built, how do we know how much water will hold? There was no test pit data in the area of the rain garden, both a deep test hole and an infiltration test, because rain gardens are designed to infiltrate the water into the ground. And if you don't know what the soils are, you're doomed to fail. That's, we've seen more than enough LID practices that failed because there's no soil testing. There are two large underground detention systems, one on the south side and the north side of the building. The bottoms of these systems are at elevation five, which is eight foot below grade. Again, no test pits are shown on the plan, so we have no idea what the soil testing is. I believe in the stormwater report, the applicant talked that they did a test pit. They found some film material and underlying sand and gravel, but we have no idea where the test pit was done, the depth of it, the soil log, because none of that information has been provided. And again, without it, you don't know if this system is going to function. In addition, the Connected DEP 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual requires a three-foot vertical separation from the bottom of the infiltration practice to seasonal groundwater. In light of, you know, the recent weather, even in sand and gravel soils, you're unlikely to find water. But water will, you know, you'll have a static water table in sand and gravel. It will move very quickly up and down because it's highly porous material. But, you know, a one-time test pit, that you dig a test pit, you log it, and you put the dirt back, and you say, well, I didn't find any modeling, does not mean that it doesn't exist or the seasonal groundwater doesn't exist. In well-drained soils like this, you need to monitor the groundwater by having a pipe in there during, with considered the wet season, which is February 1st to May 31st in a given year. This is the criteria DEP uses for large onsite septic systems, and it's the best way to determine the seasonal high groundwater table when you don't see modeling necessarily in the soil, which is indications of groundwater. Yeah?
Just remembering back to the hearing from a month ago, as I recall, only maybe a couple of test pits were done on this site, but there was some historical data from the surrounding area that had been done years before perhaps. But one concern I had was, one of those prior pits had been done like on the other side of the train tracks, and that was a much higher groundwater level than this. So, could it be that groundwater could actually be higher than 10 feet or, than they thought it was in different parts of this property? And the second question is, they, somewhere in their drainage report, it says they couldn't do a-
Perk tests or an infiltration test, or permeability test, I think was cited.
I'm trying to find it. I saw it before. They couldn't do a perk test because of the depth of sand and gravel, without a depth that they're not supposed to do and conduct an in-place percolation test. I don't know what that means, but could they do it? Does that matter?
Yeah. Yeah, first off, let me address the first part of the question.
Okay.
Soil testing needs to be done on the site in, either within the footprint of the stormwater management practice, or generally within 10 or 15 feet of it. Soil testing historically on adjacent properties is simply not valid. You need to verify it yourself because having dug thousands of test pits for septic systems, soil can vary tremendously in a very short distance. As far as the type of soil, the groundwater, depth of bedrock, it's all highly variable, and that's why you need test pits where your stormwater management systems. A percolation test is what we use for septic systems. It's done with a post hole digger. It's generally 18 or 24 inches deep. You fill it with water and you time it draining away. We do not use a perk test for stormwater management because a perk test measures horizontal and vertical movement of water into the soil. What we use is called a double infiltration, a double-ring infiltration test. It's two concentric rings, metal rings that are driven into the ground, and basically, think of it as a donut. You constantly fill the outer ring with water until it stops going into the soil, and what you've basically done is created a saturated zone in the outer ring. Then you fill the inner ring, and that's what you time going down because the only direction the water can move is simply vertically because it's basically got water around the outside that it can't go that way. And we use that rate, which comes out as inches per hour, in the design of these stormwater management practices because it's just the vertical movement of the water. We don't use the perk test because it measures both horizontal and that.
Thank you.
When you look at the site plan, and this is number 12, there's two stormwater management systems, and most of this impervious area on the site is all roof. There are no pipes from roof drains going into the stormwater management system. So, right now, I don't know what water goes into either of these practices because there's no piping going into it. It also, you have the gallery system, you have a hydrodynamic separator, and then the water's being conveyed out to the drainage system on Sanford. Well, if you, you have to treat the runoff before it goes into the ground. Treating it after it goes into the ground doesn't do anything, and if you don't treat the water before it goes into the ground, these underground detention systems are considered by EPA as a class five injection well because you're basically discharging polluted water directly into the ground. And that requires a permit on the federal level from EPA. But if you treat the water before it goes to a gallery system, then you don't have to get, it's not considered a class five injection well. Also, the hydrodynamic separator, and this is number, actually, some shows up 39, it shouldn't be, somehow the numbers didn't adjust, but an online separator greatly reduces its efficiency for removing total suspended solids. The University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center up in Durham, since 2004, has a monitoring site of basically a 11-acre parking lot, and they've tested all different types of practices. And what they found was that hydrodynamic separators as a class, and there's many of them, there's contact, there's foretechnics, there's probably half a dozen or more, but as a type of practice, the idea is water comes in, swirls around, sediment drops out, and the cleaner water goes through. But when you put it where all the stormwater is going through it, all of these systems have quote-unquote "an internal bypass," but the efficiency removing total suspended solids drops from 75% to 28%. And if that's the only treatment mechanism here, then the applicant does not meet the DEP goal of removing 80% of total suspended solids. The proper way to do this is you have the water quality volume, and you determine through a calculation the flow rate associated with that. The separator is located offline where you have a manhole, you have one pipe that directs this water quality flow to the separator, larger storm events bypass the system, and then they come back together. And then you can claim a higher removal efficiency, but as proposed, it's very poor removing sediment. Yeah?
I'm sorry, just tell me if I'm interrupting too much. I'm asking questions, I'm afraid I'll forget them at the end. The difference between, so, when we talk about water leaving the site, we talk about quantity and quality. You're talking about water quality.
Right now, yes.
Does that matter if no extra water's leaving the site, then left the site before the development? That's two unrelated issues, more or less, right?
Yeah, there, there are two issues. You have water quality and you have runoff volume.
Okay.
And right now, we're really discussing water quality volumes. On the site plan, number 14 on page three, there's, none of the pipes are labeled, you know, what-
Just before you get into number 14, are 13 and what's labeled, number 39?
39, yeah.
Are those two separate points about the hydrodynamic separator? Because the first point is that it, you know, it comes, comes in after the water quality treatment, which is the detention system, right? And you say that it should be first.
It should, yeah, all the water-
In the series.
Correct.
But the second point, does that have to do with where the hydrodynamic separator is located in the series? Or does that have to do with what kind of hydrodynamic separator it is?
No, the, the, number 13 says that you have to treat the water before you put it into an underground gallery.
Yeah.
So, that's the first problem. 39 on this page says that because it's, there's one pipe coming in and one pipe going out, that's what reduces the efficiency of removing TSS. So, there are two distinct points. And you can look at 2012 annual report where it gives you all the data of an online separator, an offline separator, and it's, it's very clear. Number 14, the piping on the plan isn't labeled. So, you know, they call out inverts for some of the structures of an eight-inch pipe or a four-inch pipe, but as the pipes themselves are not leveled, labeled, I cannot tell what any of the pipes are. And that's a problem because you can't really evaluate the design of the stormwater practice without knowing, you know, which pipes are, are which. Number 15, again, you know, we've got a large roof area, we have two detention systems. You know, as they're sized equally, it's a reasonable assumption that half the building goes to one, half the building goes to the other, but we don't know that. We don't know the extent of each roof that is draining to each system, so that has to be provided. Number 16 gets into the construction of the building. The building is proposed at a zero setback, which basically means that the face of the wall is on the property line. There is no setback from the property line. You cannot build a, a building to a zero setback. You're digging a foundation hole that's probably 14 foot deep here, right adjacent to everybody else's property. You simply cannot do it. I think the applicant may have said at the last meeting they were going to drive sheet piling in, well, if you drive sheet piling in on your property, then the building is not on a zero setback, it's inside the setback. For concrete forms, and I put, did concrete forms when I was in college for a contractor, you need three to four feet outside of the wall for simply a working area to manhandle these concrete forms. So, you simply cannot build this building as proposed on a zero setback without encroaching on all the adjacent properties. There is a structure, I believe it's on the southeast corner of the site on the adjacent property, that the building line shows literally right up to the property line. Well, if you're going to excavate next to an existing structure, what are you going to do to protect that structure from collapse? And if it's a zero setback, there is nothing you can do to protect that building. And if you are indeed in sand, you might have to de-water the sand, and if you de-water the sand, you also reduce the structural integrity of the sand to support any adjacent building. So, it's very problematic that you simply can't build it. Additionally, you're going to have footing drains around the outside of the building wall. Well, a footing extends at least a foot out from the face of the wall. So, the footing would be outside the property lines. The footing drain is another four inches outside of that. So, you simply cannot build this building as proposed as a zero setback.
Did you note footing drains on the plans?
I did not see them, but if you're down 13 feet below grade, you're going to need them. You cannot build it without, yeah?
Well, 13 feet below grade is higher, is lower than the groundwater, which I think is 10 feet below grade.
It, it very well could be.
Could be, because there probably wasn't a test pit done right where the community theater building ends.
Okay.
Which is what you're talking about, where the two walls are, you know-
Side by side.
But, um, does it matter? There, there's obviously a lot of water in downtown, and I guess I have two questions. One is, 100 years ago, there was a pond underneath, we have some information here, there was a pond underneath where the community theater building is. So, that came, water came from somewhere. There's water flowing around. It seems to me like, should there be more, how do you find that out everywhere there, there're going to be buildings everywhere there?
Well, what you should do on a site like this, because this is obviously, it's, it's a big structure, is you should have geotechnical borings done, you know, throughout the half-acre site. It would look at not only the type of soil, it looks at the bearing capacity of the soil, it looks at, you know, groundwater tables. They also can put in groundwater wells when they do the boring very easily, but you need a very thorough investigation to know that. I know when we did- I know when we did the Fairchild Affordable Housing for Garden Homes, we initially did two borings there and we found out, initially we had, you know, fifty feet of fill material, uh, basically on top of old wetlands. But prior to the design of the foundation, uh, they went out and they did borings roughly every ten foot, I believe, you know, around the perimeter of the building to design the foundation system. So, you know, you need a thorough geotechnical evaluation and you might find if there wasn't indeed an old, old pond there, you know, way before any of us were around, you know, you may find there, there is not bearing material under some aspects of this building. But that's the only way to know is to do borings that are deep enough to evaluate the soil condition.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, I talked about the trash containers appear to be shown between the building wall and a privacy wall. Well, you know, they're on the underbuilding parking, not underground. Well, you know, can a garbage truck come in that garage and get the dumpsters? Now, most garbage trucks, when they wheel dumpsters out, they are lifted up and over the front of the truck to dump them in the back. Well, how tall is this underbuilding parking? And A, does a gar- a garbage truck fit? And can the garbage be loaded, you know, that way? Or, does it have to be a truck where, you know, they throw it in the back and then it's, you know, compressed into the front of the truck? But again, I don't, I don't see how you can get the garbage truck in there and get the material, you know, put in the truck. I hit on this before eighteen, that again, under that, this level of parking on grade, there is also internal drains, but there's no connecting piping system shown, so we have no idea where this is going. There's a lot of drainage pipes, number nineteen, there, uh, have angle points at plans. At standard engineering practices, every time you change a direction with a pipe, you either, for a small pipe, you have a clean out to grade, or a larger pipe, you have a manhole there so that, you know, you can prevent clogging from occurring, uh, simply in a joint, um, as far as that goes. The driveway coming out from the underbuild, the, on grade parking goes right across where there's an existing parking space on Sanford. It's a parallel space, uh, right there. Obviously, that space is going to be eliminated, um, and based on, and, well, there's another space further to the south which might be eliminated. But based on what I personally observed tonight, I mean, you know, that area of downtown needs every parking space that it has. And getting rid of one, I think creates an, an issue for, you know, the other businesses there. Number twenty-one talks about the location of these stormwater infiltration practices. So, if we assume that the applicant's test logs showing sand and gravel is correct, you've got, you know, you're putting all this stormwater back into the ground right outside a foundation wall. And where is the water going to go? It's going to find the path of least resistance, which is the drainage system around that foundation. Or, if there is no footing drain system, it will find its way to saturate the soil around the building. And as we, I think everybody has found over time with a, a concrete foundation that, you know, your basement that might be in a hardpan soil, water will force its way in. It will build up in the soil profile outside the wall and it will find a hairline crack in your wall and that's where the water will come in. DEP has a recommendation that infiltration practices should be at least ten foot away from a building wall to avoid this situation. This system is in, almost adjacent to it. And you're putting all of this runoff, so every raindrop that falls on this roof is being put right back into the ground next to this building. So you're creating a potential structural issue because you're saturating the soil. Sheet number S two, again, this is-
Do you want to put it up, Emily?
Yeah, thank you. That's all right. Again, you know-
Take a breath.
That's all right. I'm good, I'm good. Again, we have these internal drains, but there's no connecting system shown for them. And, you know, on the base, on, I already discussed this, on the, you know, uh, underground parking, again, you know, there's not enough grading to direct the water to any of these inlets, but we have no idea where the inlets are actually going. So, you know, and this kind of will fall into some of the sanitary sewer issues I'll discuss a little later, but if the town already has issues with capacity in the sanitary sewer system, the DEP requirement of, of pumping the water from the underground parking to the sanitary sewer now is adding, uh, more relatively clean water to the sanitary sewer system. And the towns generally don't want more stormwater in their sanitary sewer systems because it creates overflow conditions at your treatment plant. So, if you've already got capacity issues for sanitary sewer, pumping the stormwater into the sanitary sewer isn't going to make the problems any better, it will actually make them worse. There's also two parking spaces, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that are, are not viable, in my opinion. I believe they're in the lower right-hand corner of the, uh, the screen. And there's like a wall across the driveway. But even if that's not a wall and it's unlabeled, even if you came in there, you couldn't get out of there with a car. There's simply inadequate room to make a turning movement, so now you've got another two spaces that go away. Sheet number S three, and this is number twenty-five, um, again, Eversource or UI, depending which is the particular power company here in Fairfield, you know, they get to approve the locations of transformers, et cetera. And I'm not sure they would approve the location as proposed by the applicant, but they have the ultimate say over where the underground power comes in, uh, not the applicant, um, at all. We also, you know, how are you going to provide access, you know, to the transformer? There's no sanitary sewer inverts, there is a line shown coming in, but we, again, have no invert information. This is all stuff that used to be on the civil plans, it's a matter of the standard of care. You know, you're showing a sewer connection, you have to show how the contractor can build it. Again, we also have no water lateral coming in from Sanford. So, how are you going to provide the building with both potable water and fire protection water? Yeah?
The last time, at the last meeting, we were told there would be a, a tank to, and all the water would be trucked out of the drainage water. Do you understand that?
A, a holding tank and then trucking it out?
Yeah.
During construction?
No.
Oh. Permanently?
Yes.
Well, I didn't see anything on the plans or in the report. I have actually never seen that done before. Um, I don't think it's a practical solution to the problem. You know, I mean, so, depending on the rainfall event, I mean, if you have a half acre, you know, building, let's just say twenty thousand square feet, and, you know, you take two inches of rain over that, um, that's a big volume of water. And the, the, they don't show a large underground tank there, but, you know, you could overwhelm that tank. You may need tanks, if you were going to do that, in the ten to fifteen thousand gallon size to do it. And that's a lot to pump out. And then where are you going to dispose of it? You still have to treat the stormwater. It doesn't get you away from that just because you collect it and take it off some, the site someplace, you still need to treat it. The pollutants don't magically disappear because you're, um, you know, uh, putting it in a tank. So, uh, sheet EC one, which is the first erosion control plan, they show a set, temporary sediment trap on the south side of the building, uh, but there's no grading. So how can a contractor build this system when they have no idea what it looks like? You've got to have contours because there's a certain volume that is required, uh, for temporary sediment traps, and you need contour information to verify that that information is provided. They also were showing this trap to be set at a bottom elevation, uh, based on the description, at elevation five. Well, that's like ten foot below grade. So, you know, you're going to put this way in a hole and you can't drain the water out if it's that deep below grade. There's simply no way to get the water out. So it's just going to sit, uh, basically in that area. They also show, um, on number thirty-one, there, a diversion swale which appears to discharge right onto Sanford Road. Well, if you're discharging water just onto the road, that clearly is a safety hazard. Um, and depending when construction is done, if it's during the winter and it's cold enough, you've got an icing, uh, risk, uh, for that. You also have to have a soil stockpile on the plan, no matter what type of, uh, development is. The only exception is a single family house that disturbs less than half an acre, then you don't need one. There is not one shown on the plan, so it's not in compliance with the Connecticut DEP two thousand and two guidelines, uh, for soil erosion, sediment control. The detail on this sheet EC two, number thirty-three, there's a detail for the sediment trap, but it conflicts with the information shown on the site plan. So, what type of system are you going to build? They also provide a detail, number thirty-four, for check dams, but no check dams are shown on the site plan. So if you don't need a detail, if you're not proposing them on the plan, you don't show the detail. Or, if you are using them, then you show them on the site plan. The construction sequence is overly simplistic for a project of this magnitude. This needs, i- i- if it was to be possible to build as proposed, you need a detailed phasing plan, um, you're going to have to have a de-watering plan, um, because of the size of the excavation. Where is all the material going to go that you're digging out of the site? You're going to have a lot of dump trucks and based on my experience coming down Sanford to the Post Road, you know, two cars, it's a tight fit, let alone a car and a triaxle full of dirt coming out to the light, as far as that goes. And again, de-watering is going to be a major concern. Even if you're slightly above groundwater, you know, it, it doesn't take much to come up and down, so you need to have a de-watering plan. And again, where is that water, uh, going to go? Sheet D one is a detailed sheet. Again, they show, uh, a weir within a concrete manhole, but the plan doesn't, uh, the site plans call out orifices and not a weir. So, the question is, which one is the outlet structure? Are you using orifice controls or are you using a weir? It's one or the other. It can be both, but you have to have the details. And again, you know, there's no provisions for de-watering, um, you know, on the site. Even if you think you might not hit groundwater, uh, with the depth of the excavation, you should have a plan on there so that the contractor, if he does need it, he has it on it. We did a project recently in Stanford that's under construction and, uh, they found, based on borings, the groundwater is about seven feet below grade, and we're digging nine foot down. So we had a de-watering plan on the plan so the contractor could follow it and, you know, they could keep digging. The next thing talks about the stormwater management report. Number forty talks that they did test pits for each of these infiltration practices. Well, nothing is in the report, there's nothing on the site plans, so I have no idea if they did them or not. They note that the, the applicant notes that the bottom of the infiltration practice will be a minimum of two feet above groundwater. That's not the DEP requirement, the DEP requirement is three feet. But again, without the evidence of test pits and groundwater monitoring, we don't know if that, uh, will be met. You know, they are, uh, they do state that they couldn't do a percolation test, yet they're using an infiltration rate of one inch per hour in their stormwater routing analysis for these systems. Well, if you don't have any test results, what are you basing one inch per hour on? You can't pull a number out of the he- the air. You need to have factual data based on field testing for this stuff. And then the DEP manual requires that you take fifty percent of that value in doing the design of that system. The water quality volume is, uh, the amount of volume that's associated with one inch of rain over your contributing impervious area. This is the dirtiest water that comes off any impervious area, uh, because pollutants generally wind up on impervious areas, both roof and pavement. And then when it rains, that initial flush of water off the sites carries the highest pollutant load. So the goal of the water quality volume is you have to treat it and it has to be captured and treated according to DEP. Now, if you do a mechanical system like a separator, you calculate the flow rate associated with that volume, as I discussed earlier, and you size the practice for that. Otherwise, you have to show that you are fully containing that water quality volume in your practice to be treated. And in this case, the treatment system is after the galleries. So again, this roof runoff is being discharged directly to the ground. Similarly, the groundwater recharge volume is a calculation by the DEP manual that basically looks at, you know, any, any site, when it rains, a certain amount of water will infiltrate naturally into the soil. When you develop a site and you pave it over or put a roof over it, obviously you're covering areas that did infiltrate. So the groundwater recharge volume is a volume that is designed to maintain pre-development infiltration rates. And again, you have to demonstrate that you're going to infiltrate that particular volume. That has not been done here. In this case, the applicant's using a factor, there's A, B, C, and D factors for the groundwater recharge volume. Well, they're using a D factor po- possibly because it's, you know, an urbanized area, but yet, on the flip side, they're claiming they have sand and gravel soils, which would be an A soil, which would be a higher volume factor to calculate it. So, you can't have it two different ways. Either you're basing it on onsite soils, or you're not. But in this case, if they're claiming sand and gravel soils, the groundwater recharge volume is much larger than what the applicant has, uh, provided here. Again, we don't know in number forty-seven, you know, the depth of unsuitable soils on the site. Obviously, this is an urbanized area that was probably cut and filled when all of these buildings were built. But is it two foot deep? Is it ten foot deep? We don't know because none of the data has been provided. When they looked at the existing conditions analysis, they did not include any impervious cover. Based on my observations in the field, you have fairly compacted gravel parking lots, you have building roofs on this site, so there should be impervious cover as part of your pre-development analysis. They're also using a hydroclass, uh, soil class C, yet they're using class D elsewhere. You've got to be consistent and you've got to base it on, you know, actual, you know, soil testing, as far as that goes. Kind of a, a technical issue in number forty-nine. The applicant uses what's termed a REACH, uh, which is a hydraulic term in a, a program that most engineers use called HydroCAD. A REACH is an open water course, that's the only thing it is. There's no open water course on this site, so the use of a REACH is inappropriate for the hydrologic model. They also modeled the two stormwater management systems as one system. That's incorrect because the whole roof doesn't go to each system, it's being split. Some of it's going to one, some of it's going to the other. Each of these systems have to be analyzed separately with the particular watershed that is tribute to, tributary to them. There were no pre and post development watershed maps provided, that's a standard thing that all of us engineers have to provide that shows your town engineer, you know, here's the existing drainage patterns, here's the post development patterns where I'm taking the water. Number fifty-two gets really into the water quality. You know, is, at Fairfield, along with every other town on the stage, is under the MS four perm- permits from Connecticut DEP. This forces you to look at water quality of development projects. You really should be mitigating existing water quality impacts from your own roads and systems, but new projects are also supposed to meet this, so you'll make things worse. We have no assessment of the pollutant loads being generated by this site. You will have hydrocarbons, you will have oils from the vehicle movement. Surprisingly, you're also going to have high nutrient loads, uh, because of the roof. Up to forty percent of nutrient loads, phosphorus and nitro- nitrogen come as atmospheric deposition, as happening right now, happening during a rainstorm. It's little pieces that just float down on impervious surfaces. When it rains, that stuff is washed off. So even a roof is not clean. A residential roof may be slightly cleaner, but big commercial roofs simply are not. And this is based on, uh, literature review, uh, North Carolina State University did a l- a large literature review and research a number of years ago where they found that forty percent value. So that's pretty significant. Most people would assume nitrogen and phosphorus comes from fertilizer on lawns. It doesn't, it comes from the air. And so it's a big deal when you have a large roof area. Again, what are some of the impacts of nutrient loads? Well, phosphorus loads are a freshwater issue. They provide a viable food source for algae, invasive vegetation in freshwater streams. Uh, nitrogen is much more a greater problem here in Fairfield because you're on the sound. Excess nitrogen, uh, will cause tidal grasses to die. And when tidal grasses die, uh, the wetland soils, uh, which are highly erodible, um, uh, become exposed to more wave action and they erode. The tidal grass is what keeps the, the mucky tidal wetland soils in place. When the vegetation dies, they become subject to, you know, increased wave action and then increased erosion. So you have environmental impacts from the increased nutrient loads. Metals and hydrocarbons in the runoff are a problem more in freshwater systems because at low levels, they can be very toxic to the organisms that live at the bottom of the stream, the benthic organisms which are at the bottom of the food chain. But, you know, they can be toxic, uh, at very low concentrations. So again, you have to adequately treat the runoff before you're discharging it. On the sanitary sewer issue, um, I read through all the documentation from, uh, the Sewer Commission or WPCA. And again, it appears that they want a lot more monitoring data of- And again, it appears that they want a lot more monitoring data of the lines out here, which hasn't been done, so it's an open question that whether the existing agent's line has the capacity to handle the flows from this site. There was talk for a smaller project of upgrading the line to ten inches, but again, there's no proposal for that. So the adequacy of sanitary sewer is basically a very large, open-ended question, in my opinion. And if you don't have sewer, you clearly have a, you know, a public health problem because, you know, if a line overtops or comes out the manholes, which sometimes has occurred down in Darien where they have a lot of what we call inflow infiltration problems or INI, where sewer will actually, sewage will actually come out the top of the manholes because the lines are under pressure because of the flow rates. According to your staff review from June first, twenty-two, there's a lot of flooding in this area. I've, not recently, but a number of years ago, was down here and drove through about four inches of water, you know, on the post road in this vicinity. The area is prone to flooding. As proposed, this project is not gonna lessen the flooding in the area and will likely contribute to it. And again, that's clearly a public health and safety issue, as far as that goes, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trinkas. Go back to your summary.
Yeah, let me just, let me just go back to my executive summary. You know, so the bottom line is, the stormwater management system, number one, is not gonna reduce non-point source pollutant loads, so you will have adverse environmental impacts due to the increased nutrient loads. It does not comply with the DEP goal of eighty percent reduction of total suspended solids. Number two. Number three, the building cannot be built as a zero setback building. You know, there's just no way to build it. I actually used a wonderful tool of Google to see if there are any types of foundations that you could build in this type of scenario that didn't require excavation beyond it. I could not find one. So you simply cannot build it. Based on the lack of data on the plans, number four, I cannot confirm that the system will, the stormwater management system will function as it's represented by the applicant. If it doesn't function as intended, you will have increased volume discharges onto Sanford Road, which will make the flooding situation worse. And lastly, the sixty spaces are inadequate for sixty-three units, based on my experience doing many other eight-to-thirty G applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Trinkas from the commissioner, or I should say additional questions? Commissioner Braun?
I have kind of a theoretical question and then an exact question. I've been reading a lot of stuff on one of the nextdoor.com neighborhood pages about, from people that seem to know about septic, I mean, sanitary sewer and how it interferes with storm sewer. What's the relation, if one overflows, does that affect the other? And we end up with sewage on the beach. So does this have any bearing on that? Because I don't understand that.
I'm not sure Fairfield has what's called a combined sewer, sanitary sewer system or CSO system. A lot of cities have these systems where you had, you have separate sewer and stormwater, but if there's an overflow in the stormwater side, it goes into the sewer system. And then this increased volume is then directed to your treatment plant, which tends to overwhelm your treatment plant. If the treatment plant does not have storage capacity, you do get the periodic discharges because they, they have too much water to deal with. I'm not sure if Fairfield has a CSO system. I know Bridgeport, New Haven do.
And even if it's not a joint combined, you mean combined sanitary and storm sewer system?
Yeah, that's, that's a CSO.
You know, if it's not, one of the issues was people tapping into their sump pumps into the sanitary system then?
Yeah, the other problem, and your WPCA probably keeps them up at night, is people do exactly that. They connect their, a footing drain, a sump pump in their basement to their sanitary line, which puts basically clean water into the sanitary sewer system and creates capacity issues because in some of your denser neighborhoods, you know, you're on quarter acre houses, so you have, you know, quarter acre lots, so you have lots of houses in a given block. So if everybody does that, you put in a lot of water into the sanitary system, and then when it, you know, does rain, those pumps are pumping more water, but you also have the raw sewage going into the system, and the lines can become, run basically under pressure. What will happen is, the water in the sanitary line will fill up the pipe and start filling up the manhole itself, and if it gets really bad, it actually comes out the top of the manhole because it's under pressure. So the WPCAs wanna disconnect stormwater connections, roof drains, sump pumps, but it's very hard to ascertain, you know, who has them, who doesn't. But it's a major issue in any community with a sanitary system.
And are both pipe systems near each other? Is that why?
They're generally separated in most city areas, and not Fairfield's a large city, but generally sanitary runs down the center line of the road. Water runs on one side of the sanitary, stormwater runs on the other side, maybe three or four feet apart. Now, a lot of the older sanitary systems in Fairfield County are, the old tile pipe, these systems go back to the nineteen hundreds or nineteen twenties. These joints are not Titan joint pipe, they're not PVC pipes, so they get a lot of infiltration there where you get tree roots coming into them, where, again, groundwater enters these systems. Stormwater pipes generally were, you know, still concrete, but again, similar just bell stick it joints, which are not necessarily sealed. And, you know, the only way to, on a sanitary system, if you've got a lot of leakage in your lines themselves, is to line it with a PVC liner. You can actually pull a liner through it, pressurize it where it expands out to the diameter of the pipe to seal it, and then you have to re-core all of the individual lines that come into it. But it, it is a big problem, you know, for any municipality that has sanitary sewer.
In some of the code review minutes, in a couple places, they mention that Pine Creek March is south of here. I don't know if that's connected to the, must be connected to the storm sewer, I guess. But in both of these notes, it says Pine Creek March is ultimately at the receiving end of any groundwater that could potentially be pumped from the site. I think they were talking about either during the construction process, what are you gonna do with all the water? Or maybe even if, I don't think they're really talking about if it overflows during, you know, the management of the building, if the stormwater system doesn't really work. I assume it would all go in the same place. So how, how does that interact with what you were saying about the stormwater system will not be effective at reducing non-point source pollutant loads? But does that mean that, that's quality, but if it overflows, does it end up in San Morder? I mean, in South Pine Creek?
Assuming the building has footing drains, that would likely be pumped up to the stormwater system because they can't drain by gravity, so you're adding relatively clean water, you know, to your, to your stormwater system, excuse me. But the underground parking, that runoff has to go to the sanitary sewer system. And again, by putting these infiltration practices right outside the building wall, that water is likely gonna get under the building, and you're gonna wind up pumping that out to the sanitary sewer also. And, you know, without knowing the depth of the groundwater and how, you know, how much it's moving through the site, you can estimate it, but you need to know more data because you can size these systems, but right now, we don't have enough data to know, you know, how much the groundwater is, you know, under the site and where it's moving. But, you know, volume will overwhelm these systems. You know, Darien has had historical problems. Everybody knows where the railroad tracks goes across Route one in Darien. That, those manholes right there routinely overflow.
With stormwater or?
Actually sanitary and drainage both overflow there. And you gotta understand, and similar to Fairfield, all of our coastal communities back in the nineteen hundreds were mostly agricultural communities. And that's when the drainage and the sanitary lines were put in on, you know, Route one way back then. And now, all of these watersheds are developed as commercial or single-family development, and so you have huge volumes of water that come down that these systems were never anticipated to handle. And basically, what happens under the railroad in Darien is, you know, the water comes out of the manhole and it ponds under the trestle there because that's where the water surface wants to be. The pipe simply does not have the capacity. And when you're closer to a tidal environment and it's relatively flat grade, I mean, from the post road to here, you know, if there's now five or six feet of pitch, maybe, but, you know, when you get a tropical storm or hurricane and your outlands are at the sound and the waves are pushing water back up to the pipe, and it's raining upstream and the water's coming down those pipes, all of a sudden, that upstream water hits the water in the pipe. It can't go anywhere, so it continues to back up and then floods, you know, low line area.
Situation where this building could potentially cause environmental harm if you have dirty water from the sanitary system somehow intermingles with the stormwater system and overflows the system?
You could. If the right storm event comes up, you could have, you know, all kinds of problems.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there are questions. Commissioner Francis, you had an inquiry for staff?
Could you get a statement, the weir superintendent, we have the sanitary line and the storm line, if what Mr. Trinkas theorized happens here when our storm system is overloaded and goes into sanitary, and you can't process it?
Probably something as simple as the storms we've had in the last two weeks, the two Mondays. Never mind a real storm. You know, if he finds that's happening in the, at the sewage system.
Maybe I can rephrase the question. I think the question to ask Laura or Bill at engineering is, you know, is, are there portions of the town that drainage and sanitary sewer system are combined, and does the treatment plant wind up treating excess amounts of water during certain rainfall events?
Yeah, that's, that's possible too.
Well, I can answer that. We do have a separated system. We don't have a lot.
Mr. Trinkas, you mentioned a couple times about the level of groundwater at the site and insufficient information, if I'm not mistaken, about the level of groundwater. You reviewed the test pit information from the applicant about saying that they found groundwater at ten feet, and then I think they referred to a twenty-seventeen study in the area that had groundwater at ten feet and eight feet nearby. And then, as Commissioner noted, there was another test pit that had it at three feet across the railroad track. So are you, do you believe that further test pits or, you know, borings need to be done for groundwater at the site?
I would if I was designing the site and putting parking under the building, yes. I would do borings to understand the soil conditions, at least ten foot below my lowest level of the building. But I'd also wanna monitor the groundwater so I can have an idea whether I'm gonna put my building foundation in the groundwater or I'm gonna be above it. Because if I'm in it, while I can de-water it to build it, then you've gotta seal the building to prevent the groundwater from coming in, you know, from the outside of the foundation. So, you know, one or two test pits, and again, they're not, the locations were not on the plans near where the logs provided. They just had those statements in the report.
Any other questions from Mr. Trinkas? All right, Mr. Reckey?
So you go.
No, no. I was just pointing to.
Okay, I'm just looking at your intervention. There's been a lot of facts presented, and I'm not an engineer, so can you explain in more simplistic terms some of these allegations? So allegation on page two, it says the stormwater management system is inadequate to reduce non-point source pollutant loads. I don't understand it, but simply.
No, simply. Simply. We were trying. You know, non-point source pollutant loads are pollutant loads that come from, you know, just a paved surface, a roof area. They're not from a pipe. That's the difference. And the stormwater management system as proposed does not reduce them to reduce the potential environmental impact. And as I said, phosphorus and nitrogen nutrients, because this is all pretty much roof, will provide, you know, will cause environmental impacts over time, both in freshwater and tidal systems. So it affects the natural environment by killing vegetation or allowing invasive plants to take over. Algae is a, is a big one.
That's if it escapes.
If it, if it's discharged, you know, if it's not treated adequately on the site and is discharged, that's the, that's where the impacts.
And you're saying the design of this system does not treat it before it goes, yeah, before it goes down to the, something else, and then it goes somewhere else?
Yeah, it's not being treated properly before it's being discharged into the ground, and even if...
Well, the rain garden you're talking about.
Well, not only the rain garden, but even the gallery systems. It's, you're not treating the water before it's being discharged into this quote-unquote sand and gravel soils. And ultimately, that groundwater is moving down to the sound.
Oh, but it doesn't stay on site?
No.
So the quantity isn't greater, but we're talking about quality here?
Well, you're talking about quality from a pollutant load standpoint. But then you're also talking of increased runoff volumes because you do get some infiltration even on the gravel parking lot, you will today. But the whole site is now basically a building. So you're gonna have increased runoff volume. And again, one of the things we're seeing is a lot more short-duration, high-intensity storms. You know, we don't get, you know, six inches in an hour, but we get three inches in two hours.
I think we got four inches about five days ago.
Okay, well, very well. I mean, the other, I know two weeks ago, I got caught out riding on my bike, and there, I hit a couple substantial downpours. It was not fun riding a bike, and I'll say that. But what we're seeing is these short-duration storms that drop a lot of water in a quick period of time. And when you have a large impervious area, that's an instantaneous big volume of water that has to go someplace. And the, the systems and all the programs that we as engineers use, HydroCAT, we're using a twenty-four hour storm event. That's what a rainfall event is. It goes from midnight to midnight. And, you know, if you take six inches in twenty-four hours, that's pretty light rain, if you think about it. But if you took six inches in three hours, that's a downpour and a half. And when you put all of that water on an impervious surface at once, that's a huge volume of water. Now, this system is based on those twenty-four hour storm events. Now, what I do when I'm gonna infiltrate is, I can, in the program, you can change the time of the storm from twenty-four to twelve to six, and I run the same rainfall, but I shorten the time duration and I see how well my system works to attend, to account for what I call act of God rainfall events. But right now, when you get two inches of rain over a half acre building roof, that's a huge volume of runoff that will likely overwhelm the system because it's not sized to get that, take care of that water as fast as it needs to.
So to clarify further, so when you, when you, when the stormwater detention system, which deals with volume, satisfies our town's requirements that the post-development water leaving the property will not be greater than the pre-development water? That has nothing to do with a big storm event. That'll overwhelm everything. It's not good great water, but it's also, you know, you can't control it if there's too much water coming down from the skies.
Yeah, I mean, what your engineering department requires, which is what many of towns in the state require, is the peak rate control, the idea of zero increase in runoff. This actually, Reading was the first town to adopt this back in the late seventies. And the, the theory was, okay, I have, you know, X amount of water now in a nice wooded site. I have ten X later after development, so I build a pond and I let it out at X. Everything should be fine. Except what nobody thought about back in the seventies was that you have a giant bathtub, you have this ten X volume. So what you're doing is, you're letting the water out at a rate, but the volume is taking much longer. And what has been the result of that is, natural stream channels are eroded because they're flowing for a higher, a higher height for a longer period of time. And so that's where peak rate doesn't address, you know, the problems with stormwater. The problem with stormwater and flooding is volume. It's not the rate of runoff, it's the volume of runoff. And there's two ways you can get rid of volume. You can infiltrate it, or you can provide what's in the DEP manual called the channel protection volume, where you take the peak rate for a two-year storm for pre-development, the post-development peak rate for a two-year storm, and you take the post-development, you throttle it back to half of the pre-development number. So if the pre-development number was five and the post was a hundred, you design an outlet structure where you let it out at two and a half. And the idea is that then your receiving system, the water surface will be lower, it will flow for an extended period of time, but it doesn't overwhelm the system. And that's where, you know, volume is the driver of flooding, and it's a capacity issue. You know, your piping system on Sanford and the post road and down to the sound, you know, is, you know, it's antique, and it's, every coastal town has it. It's not, you know, you know, just the Fairfield, but it can't carry these large volumes of water that occur at one time. When you look at downtown, you know, you've got all the small roofs, you've got all the roads, the sidewalks, all of that's pavement or impervious cover. So when it rains, it's just volumes and volumes of water, and it overwhelms your system. When the system can't drain, it fills up your roadway, and that's the flooding issue. So volume is the problem, rate is really not. But volume is, and this, this design is not addressing volume or water quality.
I'm mindful that we're approaching our ten o'clock curfew. Do, does the intervenor have more commentary or testimony on the, on the environmental portion? Because I know you have other comments.
I just want to make sure.
Take your time.
On the environmental, more, more public safety. So, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I'm so into water, I didn't realize you had more of your presentation.
No, well, uh, we, we're gonna, obviously, we're going to have to continue with public comments at the next meeting. Because the public hasn't gotten a chance. Um, and you have some comments that don't go directly to the inter, inter intervention. So, you can make those, uh, next time. Um, but I wanted to make sure that we, uh, address the environmental issues fully since we have Mr. Trinkus on the stand. Are there any other, uh, questions from Mr. Trinkus? Either from those present or, uh, on the web, the WebEx?
Will he be here next time if we do have questions like in Stinkus tonight?
Uh, well, uh, that, that's up to the intervenor, but it would probably make sense.
We'll be here anytime he wants.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, do you think that you can make your comments, uh?
In how long?
In ten minutes?
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Go for it.
Yeah, I prefer not to speak, so, but, so, this will go very, very quickly. Uh, number one, thanks again to the commission, and thanks, Stephen, for your thorough, uh, review. Uh, just wanted to, I, I gave, uh, something that is not necessarily important, uh, a lot. I mean, it's important to the Fairfield Center Alliance, only that it be part of the record. Uh, so, if you need to look at it later as you deliberate, uh, approval or denial or whatever, uh, you have it. I wanted to show, if there's any way you can, uh, make that bigger just for the public that's here. Uh, based on Primrose's, uh, very nice rendering, nope, that one, yep. Very nice rendering, if we just focus on the bottom one. You could blow it up a little bit. I just wanted to sh, to make sure, uh, maybe I'm reading something wrong or seeing it, and I'm well aware, given my line of investments, that renderings are not set in stone. Uh, but I do notice that we are losing, uh, public parking on the street based on this application. Uh, that needs to be, I believe it's at two spaces. Uh, and the applicant has put a car right in the middle, whereas the entrance, uh, if we turned it around, if we show the next slide, you'll see that in that rendering, the next slide, I mean, Ms. Harrigan. Oh, sorry. Whoop, you got to flip it. It was, uh, it was good before. Can you just, like, ninety degrees?
Rotate it.
Not the end of the world. Look, we, we can adapt. Everyone just go like this. Uh, if you look at the, the image on the left, I wanted to make sure that the commission saw and that the public saw that those two entrances, uh, nope. That's all right, go back. If you want, I can just point it out. Basically, the two, the two openings with the commission's permission. Bear with me. Just wanted to go here real quick. So, if we were able to put this, these images right here are actually more than a hundred and fifty-five feet away from Sanford Street. The only thing that is on Sanford Street is this entrance and exit, and this entrance and exit. And Stephen, if you, real quick, like in thirty seconds, want to just, the turn radius, and right now, we're going to lose a parking space that's here, and we're going to lose a parking space that's here. And this is garbage for the community theater and, uh, Mr. Burke's family's property, I believe. Go back, that's all right, don't worry about it. Right? And, oh, we don't have a lot of time. Don't, don't stress it. It's not that important. Uh, again, you've got people either going in here or whatever, right? And you have people making a turn. I'm not sure where the parallel parking on the street has been interfered with. Are we losing these two spots, which is not the end of the world? But given the testimony tonight, I think every parking space matters. And they are proposing, at least in the rendering, there is a parking space, parallel parking space here, uh, which would mean we possibly can lose three parking spaces because I just don't think it makes any logical sense that a parking space can go there given what Stephen had said before about the turnarounds coming out of those. Uh, not even from a safety thing, I don't think the car can actually make the turn. Uh, anything to add real quick or no? Okay. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Olinsky, uh, from SLR, uh, I understand his position. I can appreciate the job he has to do. Uh, but I heard at least three or four times that the average stats across the country, the average stats across the country. And, and I would argue, uh, my, our position would be that if you're using average stats in a localized, very critical decision like this, which I understand is industry-standard average stats, is the equivalent of me, uh, taking the average, one, uh, the average sales price of a, of, uh, one hundred-unit apartment complex across the country and going to New York City and, and forcing my, the industry average for a one hundred-unit apartment complex on an owner. I believe all of these things cannot be decentralized where, oh, this is the industry average, this is the industry average. We should care more about Fairfield, localize everything that we're talking about. Uh, uh, Mr. Olinsky, I doubt very much, was at the Fairfield Theater Company, which has a oc, uh, occupancy and capacity of eight hundred people. The Community Theater, which has occupancy of four hundred people. Nine to ten, I believe it's ten, eating establishments and bars, all with zero parking but already grandfathered in and add a lovely vibrancy to our town, are all relying on this parking that we're saying is going to accept overflow parking. Uh, we were there tonight at six o'clock. What Steve did not mention is we left our two moors. So, we wouldn't have been the full length of Sanford Street at six o'clock. And it took three full cycles of the light for us to even get to the light. Uh, and that's at six o'clock, when I would argue, most people are getting home from work. So, it goes contrary to what the evident, the, the data we were hearing about doing it at midnight. That makes no sense to most logical people. Uh, I think that's it, Jim. Or, I'm sorry, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to thank you for your time. I would also like to just remind you, not that you need reminding because you're all excellent citizens of our town, uh, but we elect you to keep us safe. And I think this application, uh, has so many defaults in that area. I hope that you, uh, uh, look upon it, uh, and make sure that all the things are, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and do not make exceptions in this case. I also think it's kind of crazy that without the WPCA approving it, that it would even be considered to be approved, uh, even contingent on a WPCA approval. They should get the approval from WPCA first and then come before this commission. That is just our view. Uh, that is it. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak. Sorry if I want an extra minute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, does that conclude the intervenor's presentation?
It does, unless, we just wanted to go through some of the, I, uh, I've, I sent it to Attorney Smith as well. Uh, at least I don't, I have, if I haven't, I will, Chris. Uh, the, the flooding that is very recent, uh, right at the entrance and exit. It's not close to it, it's right at the entrance and exit, uh, that where the applicant is proposing to put the egress.
Very good.
Okay? Thank you very much.
We're, we're at about four minutes to ten PM. Um, there will be additional, uh, public hearings. Um, at, uh, the beginning of the next public hearing, um, the public will have an opportunity to comment, uh, after which, uh, the applicant will get a chance to rebut. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Wint, how are we on scheduling?
We are intending to, as we have told, uh, you all, and we have preparation for this building to continue next week. So, we're adding a meeting to the calendar next week with the second of August. Uh, and then, it may be our, our regular, next regular scheduled meeting thereafter is the ninth, following Tuesday.
Okay, very good.
Um, just a matter of housekeeping, I, as, I have discussed this, uh, with Attorney Smith throughout in terms of the scheduling, but just as a matter of housekeeping, we will need an authorization of, uh, extension to, to continue to those dates as we laid out.
Very good. And Attorney Smith, uh, what, what's the applicant's position on the extension?
Uh, we do not have, we would certainly consent to those extensions, Mr. Chairman, and we would anticipate probably doing our rebuttal at the August ninth meeting. I understand that you're meeting on the second, and we'll hear from the balance of the public, hopefully. And, um, and then, again, we'll need, uh, additional time, obviously, to, to be able to provide you with a comprehensive and concerted rebuttal.
Very good. Um, that, that doesn't sound like it'll be a problem. So, uh, we are on for, uh, Tuesday, August second, an additional meeting, and then our regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, August ninth. Uh, next, uh, pub, public hearing on this matter will continue with public comments, and then we'll anticipate the applicant's rebuttal on August ninth. Um, any further business for tonight before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman? Just for the record, Chris, just for the record, the hearing will be continued at the same location and in the same format on, on August second, correct?
It will, uh, to, to the, uh, the Fairfield Fire Scroll, and it will be held by, uh, WebEx as well as in-person.
Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Am I allowed to?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to make sure, do something quick. According to, uh, Attorney Smith, uh, he's going to be ready for his rebuttal, uh, which is planned on August ninth.
Correct.
So, the, is there other item agendas, items on the agenda for August second? Or is that just going to be one hundred percent, if it's an hour, a half an hour, or two hours of public comment? The, the, it is our intention to have the August second meeting be solely public comment. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'll be just on this, this, uh, uh, matter. And, uh, I just wanted to remember, uh, remind members of the public that in addition to or instead of, uh, commenting in, in person or on WebEx, which you, you can, you can certainly do, you can, uh, email, uh, Fairfield TVZ, and we read all of those emails, and we, uh, we review all the public comment that we get in writing as well as at the hearings. So, thank you all.
You don't read them out loud, are you?
No, no, no.
It's ourselves.
We draw her email.
So, once, so, once, so, if you have questions, though, and you can't be here, you should be on the WebEx. Because Al, Al will be on vacation.
I don't, yeah.
So, no, wait, but, sorry, can you answer that, though? So, if you have questions for developer or, I know, or, last time I asked you, we have, the public have to ask questions.
Through the commission, yes.
Then you ask either side to answer that question.
Correct.
So, can we submit questions via email that will be read? Or we have to be on WebEx or in person to ask those questions of you?
If you want to pose questions that you'd like the commission to ask the applicant or the intervenor, probably the best thing would be to submit those by email, but we can't guarantee that we will ask all of those questions.
So, but it's, but you get three minutes if you are on WebEx.
If you're in-person or by WebEx, you'll get, uh, you'll get an opportunity to speak in-person or on WebEx. And we don't, uh, we don't queue to the three-minute time limit unless there's so many people that want to speak that we have to limit people, in which case, they would be limited to an initial three minutes. And then, once everybody has a chance to comment, you could, uh, comment further beyond the three minutes.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So, once that public comment happens, and the developer, the applicant, sorry, on, on August ninth has a rebuttal, or I think that's what it's called, is that right?
Yes.
Then does the intervenor get a chance to rebut again? Because now, they may take that to, in opposition to what we just heard tonight. Does the intervenor get a second chance to rebut back?
Generally, generally, because the applicant has the requirement to persuade the commission, the applicant gets to go left. Any other questions from the public?
Are the emails that you receive from the public, are they, uh, public for everybody's procedure? Are they on the, are they on, you know, my page?
They, they do get, I mean, I'll let the staff address that, but they do get, um, posted in, uh, bulk. So, if we get, you know, if, you know. If we get twenty emails on a certain day, then those twenty emails get posted as one PDF generally to the website.
We have, many of them are already up on our, I, I can't say right now that they all are. We've received many since the last hearing, though that last slug was likely not posted yet.
Yeah, staff does a good job of getting stuff up timely. Uh, thank you all. Uh, this will conclude the public here, uh, the, with the, the public hearing for tonight. We will continue on, uh, August second with, uh, public comment.
Thank you.
And we'll conclude this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give me your cell? Because I was texting Noonan tonight about being late.